All right, Mr. Chair, we're ready to go.
Fantastic. Thanks so much. Good evening. Welcome to the Wednesday, February 24th, meeting of the Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Commission. My name's David Carter. I'm the Chair of the Commission. And before we get started, I'm going to turn it over to Becky Pepper, who will give us an overview of how the meeting will be run this evening.
Great, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the February 24th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. My name is Becky Pepper with the Planning and Development Services Department. Joining me here in the City Commission Room is Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, and Kyle Kobe, who will be facilitating the Zoom video portion of the meeting. We will work alongside the Chair, who is on remote video, to facilitate the meeting proceedings. Currently, everyone is muted, so we can talk through the general ground rules for tonight's meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel. During the meeting, please mute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon, which is found on the lower left-hand side of the Zoom menu next to the video icon. When you're muted, a red line will appear over the icon. This will make it easier for everyone to hear the meeting. Just remember to unmute yourself when you want to speak. You can also turn your video camera on or off by clicking the video icon in the menu. For the purposes of this public meeting, when you are participating in the meeting, please keep your video on. When you are not participating in the meeting, it is okay to turn your video off. You will still be able to listen to the meeting when your video is off. You'll just have to remember to turn your video back on when you're participating. Turning your video off when you are not participating will make sure that the active meeting participants can be seen on the screen. In some cases, I may turn everyone's video off if they are not actively participating to avoid visual distraction during the meeting. You can always turn your video back on during the meeting. If you're participating by phone, you can enter star six to mute and unmute your phone. Somewhere on your Zoom screen, you will see a choice to toggle between speaker and gallery view. Speaker view shows the active speaker. Gallery view tiles all the meeting participants. Commissioners, you must state your name and title each time you speak. Members of the city staff must also state their name and title each time they speak. I would also ask that applicants and members of the public identify themselves each time before they speak to ensure that everyone is able to follow along. When public comment is sought on an item, individuals participating via Zoom should use their raise-your-hand feature. Windows and Mac users can access this feature through the Participants button at the bottom of their screen. Android and iPhone users can access this feature through the More button located at the bottom right corner of their screen. For those calling in by phone, you must dial star nine. Individuals will be called upon by name in order they appear on the meeting host screen. When you're called on, please unmute your listening device and state your name before speaking. The Chair will then call for in-person public comment for those who are physically present. Staff will direct you to the podium to speak while following social distancing and safety protocols. The regular three-minute time limit will apply. All motions will need to be stated clearly. After a motion is made and seconded, staff will call on each Commissioner individually to provide their vote. Staff will then need to announce whether the motion carried and the count of the vote. I want to again remind everyone to please mute yourself when you are not speaking. And now I will turn the meeting over to the Chair.
Thank you, Becky. David Carter, Chair. Let's start by considering the action summaries or minutes from our Planning Commission meetings on January 25th and January 27th, which are in our packets. Assuming Planning Commissioners have reviewed those, I would accept any amendments or changes or motions to approve. First of all, I'd ask, does anyone have any suggested changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as documented. Commissioner Struckoff, and do I have a second? Commissioner Sinclair, thank you. Jeff, could I ask you to, or Becky, I'm not sure, could I ask you to read the roll, please?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, be happy to. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands? Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willey?
Yes.
Motion passes ten to zero.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Next, I'd like to ask if there are any reports from any committees that have met over the past month. Seeing none, let's move on to communications. Jeff, can you tell me if there are any written communications from the public that are not already in the packet?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. The Planning Commission should see the two communications that are part of your packet this evening. I highlight that one is an applicant deferral request for item number two, which is the rezoning at 5275 West Sixth Street. And there's also a communication from Jeff Johnson that is part of your packet this evening, too.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Could you clarify for us what action we need to take on the request for deferral?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. According to your bylaws, deferral requests that are made after the publication of the packet requires the Commission to consider and vote to defer the item at that request there. And for those, if you're interested there, it is Article Five, Section 2B of your bylaws that is applicable there. So the applicant did make the request, and such requests will be permitted on severe hardships and significant changes to the original application are noted in your bylaws for items. So because of when the request was submitted, it does require the Commission to act to defer the item.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Further clarification, is that something we would take up now or when it's on the, you know, basically after item one?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. You could take the deferral up at this point in time. That way, it could be, you can set the agenda as it moves forward on that item. And I believe Paul Warner, who is the applicant's representative, is also on the call this evening, so he can provide some insights if you have questions to the request.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. And final, hopefully, final clarification, is this basically something we would request a motion in the second, like any other item?
Jeff Crick?
Or just go straight to a vote?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Yeah, it would require a first, a second, and a vote to go for deferral.
Okay, very good. Thank you. David Carter, Chair. Before I entertain any motions, I'd, you know, offer Commissioners to ask any questions of the applicant. And if there are no questions, I'd be happy to entertain a motion. Commissioner Sands?
Thank you. Rob Sands, Planning Commissioner. I just, from the email, it just, it seems to infer that the deferral is being requested to address concerns with neighbors, but I would like to hear from the applicant on specifics, on why the deferral is being requested.
Thank you, Commissioner Sands. Mr. Warner, would you care to offer some elaboration?
Sure. Paul Warner, Paul Warner Architects, thank you for considering this. We did, we sent our own letter to several of the neighbors that are adjacent to this property. I think it went out on January 28th. We actually thought we'd try to get our letter there before they received the letter from the city in an effort to try to meet with them and show them the project in more detail. Most of them did not get that letter until February 12th, I believe. So I have talked to a few of the neighbors. Obviously, you've gotten a lot of correspondence. But a Zoom meeting on, you know, a fairly complicated site plan, we'd like to go over with them. There's, in our minds, there's kind of three sets of neighbors. There's Fox Chase Court, Branchwood Court, and then the Village Cooperative. So we would just like to have the time to meet with them and go over the plans and certainly narrow down some of their concerns and think that's done much better than either in their front yard or on the site or at one of the buildings than trying to explain all that and do that on a Zoom meeting. So we feel, you know, we feel actually pretty confident about the project, but we would just like a chance to explain it with the neighbors in a better setting. And that's the reason for the request. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Sands, does that answer your question? Very good. Thank you. Do I have any other questions from Commissioners? Do I have any issues with the deferral or I would entertain a motion? Commissioner Carpenter? Oh, yeah, I think you're on mute.
Yeah, I press it and then I unpress it. Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. Mr. Chair, I would, this is an action item that we're voting on, so I believe you're going to have to open this for public comment.
Point of order. Jeff, could I ask you to confirm that, please? Jeff, I, oh, I guess you're just looking it up.
Sorry. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Mr. Chair, the bylaws don't speak to public comment on deferral, but usually in the Commission's preference is to allow public comment on the items there. So if the Chair would like to entertain that, that is more than, more acceptable.
Very good. Thank you. David Carter, Chair. I would entertain a, I would entertain public comment. If there's anyone who has a comment they care to make, I would ask you to please raise your hand, as Becky specified, using the raise hand feature in Zoom.
Kyle Kobe with Planning. I do not see anybody raising their hands virtually in Zoom, but we do have one member of the public who wishes to speak on this item here in the chamber with us.
I see. Thank you, Kyle. David Carter, Chair. I see Jeff Johnson. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so this is an opportunity to speak about the solar panels that I sent a letter in?
No, sir, I'm sorry. We're specifically commenting on the deferral of item two.
Sorry.
No, it's quite all right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. And just for clarification, there is an item after we ask, I'll ask a number of sort of boilerplate questions when I'll, when I'll open up to general public comment, and that's when we can recognize you.
Very good. Thank you.
You bet. David Carter, Chair, any specific, any public comments specifically related to deferral of item two?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. We do have an individual in the room with us that would like to speak on the item.
Thank you. If you would please state your name. Yeah, just talk, it'll be okay. And forgive me, before you, forgive me, before you speak, sir, I'd just like to ask Jeff, this is David Carter again, is the comment specifically on the deferral, I believe we're only entertaining comment on the deferral, not on the content of the item itself. Is that, is that correct?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, that's correct. It would be related to the action of the deferral would be this evening.
Thank you. So, sir, I would ask you, please do state your name, but the comments we can entertain are only about the deferral of this item and not about the, you know, material arguments around the item itself, since we haven't heard from planning staff or from the applicant.
All right, I understand. My name is Thomas Carlson, and I am a representative of the Branchwood Court Homeowners Association. And I was elected to come along here and observe the proceedings. I don't do Zoom well. I don't hear well, so this is appropriate for me. And Mary Miller granted us permission. I was not aware of the fact that we're only considering the situation of the deferral. I had one general comment to make, which is, do any of the Commissioners live next to a storage facility, or Mr. Werner, or Mr. Wilson? And that's what they're proposing to do to us. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. David Carter, Chair. Any other, so again, I'm not certain that we can entertain that specific question. This item, if we do defer it, will come up again, and you'll have the opportunity to address that, that, that material issue. Any other public comments specifically on the deferral?
Kyle Kobe, Planning. I do not see any digital raised hands, and I do not believe we have any other in-person public comment at this time.
Thank you very much, Kyle. With that, I would entertain a motion to defer or to reject the request. Commissioner Sinclair?
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner, I would just make an observation that it doesn't seem like this particular deferral fits within the criteria of what our bylaws lay out in terms of there being a severe hardship or an anticipated significant change to the application. But we have, as the Commission, the discretion to defer items as they come up. And so I would, I would say we ought to just address it now and defer it if we're going to, even if it's not necessarily technically within the parameters of that section of our bylaws. So I'm happy to make a motion at this point, unless any other Commissioners have comments. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. David Carter, Chair. You raise a valid point. Thank you for calling attention to that. You know, under the Commission's discretion, I'm willing to entertain that motion and to defer if you were to make that motion and if we were to get a second. Does any, do any other Commissioners want to, you know, dispute the request or raise any objection? Commissioner Sands?
Rob Sands, Planning Commissioner. I agree with Commissioner Sinclair's assessment. Understanding that, as a body, we prefer that, that folks engage with neighbors to inform and educate, I'm not sure if it reaches the threshold, just my opinion of presenting hardship. Over.
Thank you, Commissioner Sands. Any other comments from Commissioners? Any specific objections? Seeing none, Commissioner Sinclair, would you care to make your motion?
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner, I move that we defer item number two on our agenda to reconsider a request to rezone approximately 2.46 acres located at five, or 5275 West Sixth Street.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. David Carter, Chair, do I have a second? Commissioner Butler, thank you. Jeff, could I ask you to call the roll, please?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willey?
Yes.
Motion passes ten to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. And thank you, Mr. Warner, for entertaining questions.
Very much.
Let's move on to any written communications from staff, Planning Commissioners, or other Commissioners. Jeff?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. No additional communications on that item.
Thank you. David Carter, Chair. How about written action of any waiver, requests, or determinations made by the city engineer?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. None this evening.
Thank you. David Carter, Chair. I'm going to turn to Commissioners. Do we have any ex parte communications that you need to disclose? Thank you. How about any declarations of abstentions from specific agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Now I will turn to, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Struckoff.
Eric Struckoff, Planning Commissioner. Mr. Chair, if I may, go back to the committee reports. I neglected to inform the Planning Commission that the Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Board did meet in February, and we approved a few transportation amendments, Transportation Improvement Program amendments, and elected a new Chair and Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Struckoff. Appreciate the update. So now, we do have an item open for general public comment. That is members of the public who would like to speak on issues not directly related to any of the items on the agenda. And here, I do believe we have a member of the public who would like to say something. Is that correct? If so, please raise your hand. Digitally or on video. Thank you. That would be Mr. Johnson, Jeff Johnson. You have three minutes, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, just fine.
Okay, so I guess I wondered if the board members first had received the letter that I sent, had a chance to look it over about the solar panel farms that's being proposed down here where I live. And actually, they've approached me about leasing my land, too. So that's, that would be my first question.
Forgive me. David Carter, Chair, this would be, this would be an item that was included in our packet, yes.
Oh, so anybody's, everybody's had a chance to look this over, then. So really, most of my concerns are stated in this letter. So I have a lot of concerns about this project. I was, I was approached by a field person that is out trying to lease up as much land as possible around here initially with, with an option lease, and then maybe develop these things in the future or sell them off to another company, perhaps. But nonetheless, what it amounts to is they didn't have, at least this person didn't have any answers about anything but how much they're willing to pay you. They couldn't tell me what the environmental impacts of manufacturing these panels are, of, of the reclamation of, or the, the, whether these panels are recycled when they become outdated, and the environmental hazards that exist through the manufacturer and actually that exist out here on my place, for example, if those things, if those panels were to breach, be broken open. I have no idea what's inside those panels, what will be in the soil. Nobody can answer those questions. The other thing is, these projects, you know, it's interesting that, that they're anxious to do this right now in that, you know, I think there's federal funding and funding and, and grants involved in this. I'd be a lot more interested in things that are viable on their own without federal money. And so the property values are a big issue with me. If they were to build this within five miles of anybody's place, I think it's going to affect your property values. Think it's something the county needs to consider very carefully before allowing these things in. There's also many other places these things could be built. And we have problems with, what are we going to do with the inner cities? Can't draw people back in there. This is where they need electricity. Why not build those things there? Why not on top of buildings down here at the intermodal? There's acres and hundreds of acres of building tops down there. So these are the things that I don't understand. Why they want to come out and get land out here that's in agricultural production, take it out of agricultural production, replace photosynthesis with a man-made solar panel? Makes no sense to me. And also, just before I go, that's probably all I have to say on this, but before I go, I have a neighbor here that wants to comment on, on the same thing. He's got some other points he'd like to make, if I could.
I'm just going to stop you there, just one moment. I guess, David Carter, Chair, just from the standpoint of public comment, Jeff, with this, I'll ask Jeff, is this basically just another separate item of public comment from another person at the same, on the same video feed?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask, excuse me, sir, I'm going to, I'm just asking our, our, our planning director.
Oh.
Sorry. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Chair, you are correct. It would just be another public comment. It would have three minutes at the discretion of the chair.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Mr. Johnson, please, if we could ask the other person, just state his name. Thank you.
He'll, he'll sit here where I'm at. Hi, my name's Dan Fuller, and I've also got concerns on these solar panels. You know, I've looked on, online to see if there was any type of information as far as if these guys do get this ground leased, if there's going to be any type of a security bond that they would have to post in case tornadoes came through, hit this and scattered these solar panels all the way up to Gardner, Kansas. I think that would be one thing that would be very important. Who's going to do the cleanup on these? It's, there's a lot of potential problems there. As I've seen on researching this stuff, they also keep all the vegetation gone off the ground. You know, is that going to be herbicides? Is EPA going to be called in to make sure that these herbicides don't go into the Cal River or down to Hillsdale Lake? You know, the soil erosion, on my soil out here on my farm, is a sandy loam type of soil. And if, it doesn't have any vegetation on it, it's going to wash. So you're going to have a lot of soil erosion coming off this ground out here. I guess then the last thing I would say is, the county would have to look at this, I would think, because if you have 160 acres or 200 acres that has solar panels on it, what's going to be the tax base on that? Would the county make more money off residential property on that tax base compared to having a 160 or 200 acres of solar panels out there? The, the intermodal over at Edgerton, which is about five miles from us, is growing by leaps and bounds. And there's developers coming out here all the time wanting to buy ground from us, because they're eventually going to, somebody's going to sell to them, and you're going to have housing projects going in out here. So all of these things is something that the county has to take into consideration before they would approve anything like this. So that's my two cents worth. Thanks.
Very good. Thanks very much. David Carter, Chair. Thanks to both you gentlemen. It's, forgive me, I'm going to recognize Commissioner Willey.
Mr. Chair, we don't really have a habit of, of commenting back to people that come in for the general public comment, but can, can I just take a minute to suggest that the, the two gentlemen that spoke should follow up with Tanya Voight, who's actually on this call, but she's our Director of Zoning and Codes. I've been hearing rumors about the solar farms, but not in this area, it was in a different area. So I think it's possible that a, a good number of, of landowners may be being approached and not have any official awareness with the county. So I know we can't really take that up as an item today, but can, can we direct staff to get in touch with them, or have Tanya get in touch with them? What's our way forward?
Thank you, Commissioner Willey. I think, we, we're not in the habit of commenting on public comment, because we don't receive a whole lot of public comment at this stage of the meeting. Sorry, David Carter, Chair. But assuming Ms. Voight is amenable, could, could I ask you to share your, your contact information, perhaps, so that, so folks can get in touch with you about this issue?
Absolutely. Tanya Voight, I'm the zoning director for Douglas County, and my phone number is 785-331-1325. You, the easiest email address is to email just our entire zoning team, which is zoning@douglascountyks.org.
Thank you, Ms. Voight. And I was, David Carter, Chair, I want to thank Commissioner Willey for that suggestion. I was just going to direct the, the commenters back toward the Planning Department and the Board of County Commissioners. So this is very helpful. With that, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the first item on our agenda. That is rezoning 20 acres in the southwest corner of the intersection of North 400 and East 23rd 100 Roads. And I believe Mary is here to present on that.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mary Miller, City County Planner, and I will share my screen here if I can. Kyle, could you check it? It says it's disabled.
Give me just a second, Mary, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, and as, as we're waiting, this was before you in December, and you took comments and deferred action, and you directed staff to work with the applicant to see if there was any way to condition the zoning so that perhaps it could go forward without increasing the overall density on that subject property, the 60 acres. And so as you mentioned, this is a request to rezone 20 acres from Ag 1 Agricultural to Ag 2 Transitional Agricultural. The property is located, as you mentioned, in the southwest corner of North 400 Road and East 2300 Road. To the right of this, where you'll see there's no parcels, that is Johnson County. And to the west, where we see the blue circle, that is the three-mile radius of Baldwin City. The property is not located within an urban growth area. And the request is to rezone a portion of this. This is the entire 60 acres, but the request is to rezone the northern 20 acres so that two residents could be developed here, rather than the one that would be allowed under the current zoning. I'm just going to do a quick recap. It won't take long. The zoning of the area is primarily Ag 2 and Ag 1. And this shows the area generally that's the subject of the rezoning request. And the land uses are primarily single-family residential and agricultural, as shown in the graphic to the right. This was on the staff report. It shows the character of the area. So it shows the yellow dots are the existing residences, and this is something that was taken from our GIS map, so it's possible some residences are missed, but it's fairly accurate. And the white dots in the subject property are the two proposed residences. And the red dot to the east is, I believe, a church. It's not a residence. And so this kind of shows the character of the area. It's a residential agricultural area, and there's woodland throughout. And then one factor that we discussed in the staff report is the productivity or the suitability of the property for agricultural uses. And this was included in the report on page 10. It noted there were no Class 1 or 2 soils, no prime farmland, but the property was slightly above average for production capability. And the rankings from NRCS go from 0 to 1, and these rate between 0.5 and 0.6. They were slightly above average numerically. And staff will be finalizing our lease system very shortly, we hope, so we'll have more definite criteria, you know, a better review of this criteria. Right now, it still remains fairly subjective. And as I mentioned, the commission deferred action at their December meeting and directed us to work with the applicant to see if there's some way to restrict the potential for land divisions on the southern portion, so that this division could go forward and not exceed the three land divisions of 20 acres that would be possible today. We did talk with the applicant, and then we contacted the county councillor, who noted that when you do conditional zoning, this condition has to be applied to the property that is subject to the zoning, and has to be related to an impact of that. And so we were not able to place any conditions on the remainder of the property. So this rezoning request comes back to you today unchanged from the December. And so it comes with staff's recommendation of approval, and then forwarding the rezoning to the county commission with that recommendation based on the findings in the staff report. And I'm not aware if the applicant is here today, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any for me.
Thank you very much, Mary. David Carter, Chair. I just will ask if the applicant is here to comment. And if so, please raise your hand. Okay. Oh, hello, yes. I don't see who's speaking. Could you please state your name?
Hi, this is Aaron Carlin, applicant. Sorry, I'm, I'm on mobile only.
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Carlin. Did you, would you, David Carter, Chair, would you care to follow up on Mary's presentation with any comments?
Aaron Carlin, applicant. I think the only thing I have to add is that, yeah, we, we did discuss putting in, I think, an AHRP. But as you said, that it's only for the parcel that is going to be up for opportunity right now for a split. But we were willing to consider AHRP for the, the 40 that we are looking to keep for our residents. That's the only thing I really have to add.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carlin. David Carter, Chair. And we may have some, some questions for you a little bit later. First, I would like to ask if there are any members of the public who would like to speak on this item. Again, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. And Mr. Johnson, I see you, so please feel free to speak. You have three minutes on this item.
Very good. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Very good. So I had written a letter to the board members. Hopefully, you've got that and have had a chance to look that over. So there's a number of concerns with the neighbors about infrastructure in this area, the roads specifically, and the water is, is a little bit of an issue. These are things that I think everybody's a little concerned about taxing this more. So I'd like to back up to where Mary Miller had her drawing of the area. And if you look directly on that drawing to the, if you, if you have access to it, to the, to the west of that property that's in question, all those homes in there, that was one piece of property. All those homes in there are the ones that Don Parr put in here. And, and he, you know, the county went to a lot of trouble, I know, to try to discourage developers like Don Parr coming in and buying bigger properties and splitting them up like that one got done. And so all of those little residences in there are a result of that, and loopholes that were in the system that existed years back. Okay? And if you go across the road to the north, that residence that's on seven acres there, that one was just split in the same manner. So that person bought 40 acres with an old house on it that should have been raised, and was termite infested. He flipped that house, sold it to some unsuspecting young people that just wanted to live in the country, and he was able to do that and split seven acres off. How that happened, I don't know. But anyway, it paid, that, that paid for a good part of the balance of his property. And this is what people are doing out here. They're buying properties that are larger than they want, that are more than they can afford, and they're, I'm sure the realtors are encouraging them to sell off part of that property, since it isn't exactly what they can afford or want. And the realtor gets to cash in twice on that, on part of that property when they resell it. So this is an advantage to the realtors. But it's not really good for the community. So it's my understanding that 20 acres can be sold off this without going in front of the board, and that's what I'd like to see. Just to deny the split and let them sell the 20 acres. So that's about all I have to say. But Dan wants to speak, too.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. David Carter, Chair. If I could ask, is it Mr. Fuller? Please just restate your name, make sure we got it right. Thank you.
Hi. I, I live on 400 Road, and I've been out here 44 years. In the road, 400 Road, there's been no improvements on that road in the last 44 years, except for some rock. So I'm getting to the, the concerns of the infrastructure on the roads and having more traffic out here. I don't know if you guys are aware, I've got the winery on the road, then we have a greenhouse on the road, and then just on the other side of, of the county line, you've got a fruit, and you pick 'em deal. And they are big time. And in the summertime, the traffic on this road is atrocious. And I've talked to Tanya about it, you know, when she came out to the winery when we were doing some rezoning on it. But the, the, there's two concrete bridges that were put in back in the very early 50s or late 40s that are single-lane. Nowadays, you couldn't get two, two vehicles on that bridge at the same time. It, it is, it, it's a terrible thing. Somebody's going to get killed out here, because you've got the city people coming out wanting to go to the greenhouse just what, east of us, wanting to go to the, the fruit farm. They don't understand the, the road and, and all that. And they're going to get down in there, and when we get close to those bridges, it's going to be terrible. We've got, now we have UPS trucks every day, FedEx trucks are every day, Amazon Primes every day on this road. And it, my wife almost had a head-on collision at the crest of the hill, because the truck was in the middle of the road, because the roads, this road is so narrow. There's a, a different spot east of me that has a spring in it, and that's at one lane right there. And I understand the township is overworked, you know, and they've been fighting this for years. I don't want to blame anybody. It's just that you guys have got to be aware. And I, I would appreciate it if, if some of you, before you vote on this, could come out and drive this road, and see what you're voting on before you, you approve it. And I have nothing against the fellow that wants to divide the ground up. He bought the ground, that's his ground, he can do with it as he pleases. My concern is the roads, and we're getting more people out here. And I hate to go back to say the intermodal, but again, we've got people out here, they're trying to buy ground up to develop it for homes, you know. So this is going to be an ongoing deal for the county on, on this 400 Road out here. It's absolutely terrible road. So I guess that's, if, if Tanya could, it would be a great thing if she could come out and put a, a vehicle count on this road, you know, starting about April and going through September, because that's, you're going to see what it's going to be, be like then.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fuller. David Carter, Chair. Appreciate your comments. Do we have any other members of the, of the public who care to speak on this? I think I see Trudy Winger, is that correct? If you could please just confirm that I've got your name correct.
Yes, I'm Trudy Winger. I was at the last meeting, and there was a lot of us there, or not, several of us there, that had expressed a lot of the same concerns that Jeff Johnson and Dan Fuller have explained today. You know, reading through the packet, I've seen no answers to any of the questions that we have proposed regarding infrastructure, or construction, or splitting of the property, water, concerns about possibly building on that land with some mar- water, concerns about possibly building on that land with the marsh area there. We live right next door to this, and I guess to make it easier on us to understand and be comfortable with what possibly could go down is when or how do we get those answers onto all those questions that we asked at the last meeting? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Ms. Winger. David Carter, Chair. Any other members of the public?
Kyle Covey was planning. I do not see any Zoom hands raised. I do believe we have two or three individuals here to speak in person tonight on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. David Carter, Chair, please step up to the podium and state your name.
Yes, thanks for your time. My name is Martin Belcher. I live right at the northeast corner of the 2300 and 400 Road. And my concerns are the same as Mr. Johnson and Mr. Fuller and everybody else that lives in that area. But I would like to explain something that I heard just the other day, and this was from, it's not secondhand word. It's my understanding that you have to have 900 foot of frontage in order to obtain a water meter. Well, if he's planning on splitting that where the property line runs north to south, there's not enough room there for two water meters. I was also advised that a realtor had wanted to run one line north and south and then split that with two water meters east and west. Now, that's, I can see a major problem with that, and I'm sure that the water district can too. Excuse me. But anyway, my reiteration is of all the problems that this will cause, we get dust from both sides, doesn't matter which way the wind is blowing. But anyhow, we, with the intermodal, we get people that have bought their alcohol or whatever, and they drive these gravel roads, and they run at 50 and 60 miles an hour. Excuse me. That doesn't help anything other than adding to the pollution along these roads. I pick up beer cans, trash cans, whiskey bottles, and other alcoholic beverage containers. Excuse me. So, you know, that's a major, major problem. We like to try to keep this fairly clean out in that area. Oh, and regarding Mr. Fuller's comment of 400 Road running east and west, there's two large hills, and it's been about five years ago, I had a hill jumper jump that hill just to the east of me. He went airborne, and at the bottom of the hill, which is probably 900 feet or so, he hit a major tree that we had and hurt him tremendously. The tree was knocked over, and this is about a 35-foot Scotch pine, so it wasn't a baby by any stretch of the imagination. All this is going to do is promote more traffic and water problems. That's all I got to say. Please consider the neighbors when you make your vote. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Belcher. David Carter, Chair, we have other members of the public in the commission chamber.
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, give us one minute, Mr. Chair, and we'll get the individuals in the room.
Yeah. Thank you. David Carter, Chair, please go ahead and please state your name.
I can't hardly hear you in here, but is there a mic in here?
Yeah, right there. Is this, I state your name.
I guess I can't hear.
These two right here.
I mean, to hear with, but Ron Hughes is the name. I live south. My property is south of this acreage that's, we're discussing here. And I've just got a few things, and pretty much everybody's covered most of it before, but like, just getting out there, I know that there's a lot of discussion about lot of this ground in Douglas County getting used up, and we got to protect it. But, you know, we had, back the last meeting, we had comments about, well, there's already houses across the road, so the concern was housing there, it's not going to, much matter. Well, yes, there's houses across there, but they were all, it was in the partials, they were separated, they were in timber and separated with a crick, almost divided it in half. So they had to do big culverts or no access. So that was, it wasn't the good ag ground. And anyway, and then there was a, I'd like to make a correction on one statement on the last meeting that the land hadn't been used for several years. But in fact, yeah, they've had cattle on that pasture for the last 12 years, and it was being used up to the time it was going for sale in 2019 to 20. And I was just questioning if this thing goes through, you know, when I divided mine up, it was no less than 20 acres. So I've, I've got 120 that borders that property to the south. So I guess if it goes through, I'll be able to apply to rezone mine for 10-acre spots. And I think by doing that, we're just going to open a can of worms, truthfully, but, and you guys are going to have a lot more trouble down the road. But Mr. Johnson did talk about how they're going about it, talking people into buying more property than they can handle, and they can sell, sell off because they find a little loophole and have two or three partials to pay for most of their bigger acreage. And in close, I know we're a mile from Johnson County, three and a half miles from Franklin County line, and yes, we're a long ways from the Lawrence City Hall, but I think you should think about the, protecting the families that are already there with safety and nice rock roads, maybe a little better. Fire and sheriff, you know, the fire is almost volunteer, and it's several miles Baldwin, and to get to a fire, you just will pretty much ride off a house on a slightly windy day. Sheriff Department, I see very seldom unless somebody reports a cow out. And I've been on the property where I'm at since 79, and I haven't seen much improvements, but a lot more houses. So I know we got to protect that ground. I raise cattle, always have up there, and it's disappearing, but I raise cattle, and I know people sure like that steak, but it's going to be jeopardized down the road. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hughes. David Carter, Chair. Kyle, do we have another person with in-person for public comment?
Kyle Covey was planning. Yes, I believe there's one more. Actually, sorry, correction. I believe that is all the in-person public comment we have at this time.
Very good. Thank you very much. David Carter, Chair. At this point, Mr. Carlin has an opportunity to respond to public comment. Mr. Carlin, you have five minutes, sir, if you want to respond to any of the points you've raised.
Thank you. Aaron Carlin, applicant. I think that a lot of them were raised in the first meeting, and I appreciate, you know, everyone coming forward with their concerns. Seems like a lot of them are outside of my control with the fire, sheriff, water, et cetera. But yeah, I'd really have a lot more to say to address the points, I guess. I think we'll just, we'll go forward and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlin. David Carter, Chair. I'm sure we'll have questions coming back your way. With that, I will turn it over to the commission. I entertain questions from commissioners for either staff or the applicant or members And I realize, Commissioner Ashworth, please.
Hello, Sharon Ashworth, Planning Commissioner. As with the last time when we had this before us, I asked if Mary Miller would please go through for the commission and the public in terms of what is able to, how this property is able to be split out, and how many properties could ultimately be on this section if we had the two properties on the 20 acres? But what then can happen with that remaining 40 acres? What are the possibilities there?
Mary Miller, Planner. The remaining 40 acres would be Ag 1, which allows you to do an Ag subdivision boundary survey, provided you have 20 acres and required road frontage, which I assume that it does. So technically, they would be able to do two land divisions on the property that doesn't get rezoned and two on the property that does. So if the rezoning is approved, it would be four RDPs or four parcels.
Thank you, Mary. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Ashworth, do you have any follow-up questions? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Willie.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. So when we saw this before, we looked at that, as Mary just said, without any action from us, or if we deny, then it's available for three residences on that 60 acres by the rules that we have. We tried to look for a way where we could only have four, oh, sorry, only have three parcels of that 60 acres by making sure that the property that's not being split off could not be subdivided, and that was not an option open to us legally. The option is open to us to deny this, and that's the only way that we have to even limit it to three. As the neighbors have said, you know, this is, this is the slippery slope, and this is how we get to the kind of density we have directly to the west of this property. I don't have any intention of voting for this, voting in favor of this at this time. I also really want to thank the neighbors that came out to talk about this, that came all the way to City Hall. It's 45 minutes from my house to City Hall on the west, southwest part of the county, and it's easily that far to the neighbors that came out today. So it shows a big commitment to make that drive. And I did drive that 400 Road and look at that neighborhood before we saw this item last time. So I really, I hear what people are saying about the roads, which we can't necessarily address here, and the water, which for that part of the county actually comes from Johnson County, from one of their water districts and not ours. So we're not able to answer a lot of questions about that. But what we do have control over is at least limiting it to the three that are legally available for that 60 acres and not making it available for four, which is what would happen if we vote yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair, do I have further? Commissioner Shanklin. Commissioner Shanklin, yes. Please unmute yourself. You're good.
Greg Shanklin, Commissioner. I have a two-step question. The first is directed to Mary Miller. Mary, I want to make sure that we're understanding the development potential here accurately because while it's been said that four dwelling units could be built on this, were the 40 subdivided, couldn't the same request that's being made today be made with respect to either of the two 20-acre parcels that have, you know, that could be, that that 40 could be subdivided into? And that request would be made on precisely the same arguments that are being made to us today. So it looks to me like what we really ought to be thinking about this is at least six dwelling units.
So Commissioner Shanklin, I'm just going to, David Carter, Chair, I just want to ask, are you asking for confirmation from Mary?
Yes. I just want to make sure that we're understanding the development potential correctly because I think it's more than four. As I look at it, if the same request that's being made here tonight were to be made with respect to the 40 acres, if it is ultimately subdivided into two 20-acre parcels, we'd be looking at a 20-acre parcel in each case that could then be potentially subdivided into two 10-acre parcels based on the same arguments that are being made here tonight. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Mary Miller, Planner. I have not looked at the road frontage on 2300 Road, but assuming they have enough for the divisions, if rezonings were approved for the other 40 acres, it could develop. So assuming that the whole 60 acres was rezoned, then yes, there could be six properties. It would require rezoning and making sure they have the required road frontage, but that would be the ultimate.
Thank you, Mary. Commissioner Shanklin, you have a follow-up?
Greg Shanklin, Planning Commissioner, just to follow up on that thing. Thank you, first of all, Mary, for that response. I'd like to, I think there are three major concerns that I have with this proposal. And I think we discussed them all last time, but I'd like to raise them again. The first is loss of ag land that we've characterized as above average, but is also statewide importance. And I'd like to know better what that means to us in terms of all of the potential acreage that we have available to us in Douglas County, are these piecemeal developments that take ag land off the rolls? Is that something that we should really be allowing? And I thought that's what the caution when we downzone, or rezone rather, from Ag 1 to Ag 2, requiring us to look at the quality of that agricultural land was presented. This is above-average land. Why would we allow it to be developed? Secondly, this is, the very nature of urban sprawl is that anytime you look at a new potential higher-density development with reference to the developments that have preceded it, it's going to look like it's in character. And so to look at the 24% of the land around this intersection that is Ag 2 is not the character that we should be looking at. It's the character of the 75% that's not Ag 2. And so I just, you know, I disagree. And beyond that, this is well beyond the urban growth area and probably shouldn't even be up for consideration for residential subdivision anyway. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin. David Carter, Chair, do I have further questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Sinclair.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. I don't want to short-circuit any discussion that anybody wants to have on Commissioner Shanklin's comments, but it sort of brought to mind something that I was looking at. And the, I looked at the specific language of the county zoning regs, and AG, or Ag 2, excuse me, as the staff report points out, is intended to accommodate low-density rural development in areas that are not well-suited for agriculture or development that has been designed to accommodate agricultural land uses in the area. And we're supposed to evaluate requests to rezone for the suitability of the property for agricultural uses to minimize the loss or conversion of agriculturally productive land or potentially agriculturally productive land. And as Commissioner Shanklin has pointed out at the last meeting and tonight, this is above average, and I think he's, I mean, I commend him for banging on that drum. I think that is in keeping with what the, that concern is directly in keeping with what the Ag 2 zoning says we're supposed to be concerned about. And I agree with him. I agree with Commissioner Willie. I'm not inclined to support this at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. David Carter, Chair. Other questions or commentary from commissioners? Other questions or commentary from Commissioners? I, well, I'll, I'll speak. I mean, I, I'm, I'm of two minds on this. On one hand, from a standpoint of fairness, it does appear that the applicant is, is trying to accomplish something that is in character with the surroundings. And to decline the request looks, on the surface, you know, not to be fair treatment compared with the neighbors. Commissioner Shanklin's point, though, is, is a compelling one, that, you know, this is well outside the urban growth area. And I'd also like to raise a point that relates to what Mary referenced, I believe it's the LISA system, which is this, this system that is on the verge presumably of being introduced to make less subjective and more quantitative justifications of land use actions based on soil quality. And, you know, while we wait for that system to be ready to take action that establishes essentially another precedent, seems to deepen the establishment, establishment of this kind of ex-urban character in the area. So with respect to the applicant, I'm nonetheless disinclined to, to approve this request. I'd entertain comments from other Commissioners. Also, I'd entertain any motions, although I'm not sure we're at that position at that, at that point. Commissioner Carpenter.
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. I just want to echo Commissioner Willie's gratitude to the neighbors that did make that long trek to come up to City Hall. I've driven down to this area, and it seems like you just keep going forever, especially when you're going out the, the lesser-traveled roads, the, the dirt roads at the lower speeds. And I also want to stress something that Commissioner Shanklin brought up, that in just looking what's around next door is not really the proper way to decide about a particular property. We're out in an unincorporated area. We're out in an area that's going to see increasing pressure from Gardner and Edgerton looking for more land for housing. This, this area is, well, let's just say it's endangered for its current character because of those pressures that are coming in. It seems that what one of the neighbors brought up about water meters might be the limiting factor, but I'm sure somebody's going to find a way to get around that, too, if Amazon backs up putting pressure on a water district or something. So it's, I think we are on a slippery slope, and I think that we, with the knowledge that we are working on some tools to better objectively evaluate what we're doing, this as well as us waiting for area plans to decide exactly which way we're going to go, I think we need to just wait. We need better information to decide what is going to happen out there. We still need to protect the farmland. That is important. We may not have it all incorporated in our codes yet, but we do have Plan 2040, which tells us to stress these factors. And with all that in mind, I'm joining the others that have spoken, and I'm not inclined to vote in favor of this at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. David Carter, Chair. Other comments from Commissioners or perhaps motions? As Chair, I'm not inclined to make a motion myself. We, and I would also remind Commissioners, we've still got a long agenda ahead of us. And respectful to the other folks who are waiting around for us to make a determination on this and move on. Commissioner Sinclair.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. I'd be willing to make a motion, Mr. Chair, if you'll take it.
Please, go ahead.
I move that we forward the request to rezone approximately 20 acres from Ag 1 to Ag 2 to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation to deny based on our discussions tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. Do I have a second? Commissioner Carpenter, any further discussion before we take roll? All right, Jeff, could I ask you to read the roll, please?
Sorry, Jeff Cray, Planning Development Services.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes 10 to 0. Thank you, Jeff. I'd like to, again, thank, echo some of the other Commissioners in thanking the public for taking their time. And I'd like to add to that, thanking folks who are here for other items for their patience in getting this far. With that, we have already voted to defer Item 2, so let's go ahead and move on to Item 3. This is to consider a request to rezone approximately half an acre from Commercial Strip to multi-dwelling residential. And I'm trying to find who is reporting. I believe Sandy, are you going to speak on this?
That's correct. Sandy Day, Planning. This item, as you mentioned, is a half-acre piece of land. The property is developed, but it is vacant. Surrounding land uses include residential with apartment and detached housing to both the north and the west, and commercial zoning and uses located to the south and to the east. The proposed use is for infill residential development consistent with land use policies found in Plan 2040 noted in the staff report. Additional policies addressing integration of, of the use within the neighborhood, neighborhood preservation, buffering, and aesthetically appropriate design will be evaluated with future development applications and reviewed by the Historic Resources Commission and subject to site plan approval. Property's part of the Babcock neighborhood, is a mixed-use neighborhood with commercial and residential uses. The commercial uses are found along Massachusetts Street. There is no adopted neighborhood plan or area plan for the Babcock neighborhood. Regarding the zoning suitability, the property could be redeveloped as a mixed-use project, but would need to meet the design standard that requires 50% of the non, sorry, 50% of the floor area to be used for non-residential uses. As a single-use project for residential use, the current zoning is not suitable. Impacts on the surrounding area will be further assessed with the submission of specific development project applications and to include code-required analysis of off-street parking, landscaping, screening, and other physical factors of the site. Staff's recommendation is for approval. I know the applicant was on the line here a moment ago, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the project.
Thank you very much, Sandy. David Carter, Chair. And if the applicant would like to speak?
Thank you, Paul Werner, Paul Werner Architects. Hopefully, we have a easier one for you tonight. Sandy's right, you know, CS on these small lots are, are pretty tough. We're just kind of happy that maybe the convenience stores finally gone, the, the fuel tanks have been pulled, so we're looking for a new project on the site. We're matching the zoning to the RM zoning that's just to the north of this property. And as Sandy already mentioned, obviously, full site plan would come forward. We are in the environs, so chances are the HRC will probably get to see those one way or the other. But we're, we feel good about it, think it's, you know, with the new dwellings across the street, apartments to the north, feel like we got a good project on our hands. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but, you know, hoping this is a pretty easy one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Werner. David Carter, Chair. At this point, I'd like to open this up to members of the public. If there's anyone who'd like to speak on this item specifically, please raise your hand using the Zoom function or turn on your video and wave your hand. Kyle, could I ask you to clarify if there's anybody in the Commission chamber wishing to speak on this?
Kyle Kobe with Planning. I do not see any digital Zoom hands being raised, and there's nobody in the chamber to speak on this item.
Thank you very much, David Carter, Chair. With that, I will turn it over to the Commission with any questions to Sandy or to Mr. Werner. Commissioner Butler?
Mr. Werner, my question is for you. Parking for a structure like this, it always comes up, so can you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. We, we have to meet the parking requirement. I think there's a few pretty quick sketches in your packet, so don't beat me up too bad. But, you know, I hate to say with, with COVID and stuff, our client, we're looking at one and two bedrooms. We, we feel that that's what everybody is going to, going to feel better about as opposed to larger apartments. So we're, I think we're in the neighborhood of something like 16 or 20 cars that we're trying to get on the site, and, and I think we can do it pretty easily. But we have to meet the full parking requirement for a new project since we, we will be demolishing the existing building and, and plan on doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Werner. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Butler, any follow-up questions?
Not right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ashworth?
Karen Ashworth, Planning Commission. Just want to, I went, after reading the letter that was addressed to the Commission about concerns for this particular development with lighting and height, balconies and such, I did go through the development code and just want to, and have any of the staff correct me, that there are restrictions in place for any multifamily residential areas that are built next to a single-family residential area. I did note that in the code, that there are height restrictions, there are lighting restrictions, so that when this plan would come forth, it would be reviewed by the Historical Resources Commission and meet all those requirements for an adjacent prop, for the adjacent neighborhood to be in, considered with a result, with the application of restrictions for height and light and landscaping and such. So I feel satisfied that when the site plan comes forward, those concerns will be considered in that site plan. Am I correct in that?
Sandy Day, Planning, you are correct. This project will actually have an additional review with the Historic Resources Commission, so it would be potentially a, a bit of a higher bar that the project will have to meet than a standard, I'm sorry, it would be a major site plan, but a conventional project without a historic evaluation as an overlay to the project. Mr. Werner has been advised of all of those things. We've been in touch with property owners that have expressed specific concern, working through those projects, in the expectation that the new project would need to be code-compliant. That means not looking for variances and waivers.
Thank you, Sandy. David Carter, Chair. I think there are some other questions. Commissioner Sands?
Rob Sands, Commissioner, this is a quote from Mr. Werner, and this is probably very premature, but that's, that lot's got some premature street trees on it. Do you have any, do you have any foreshadowing as to what your intention with those street trees are going to be? Over.
That's a little early question. I do know we have gone back and forth a little, I think, in my sketches. Most of them only show one curb cut. The street trees, I think, are in the right-of-way or very close to it with our setbacks. It's a really flat lot. I'd, I'd like to think they can all stay. We're certainly not looking at doing parking like, you know, our neighbor to the north, you know, with older buildings. I mean, their only parking is actually in the right-of-way, but, but that's a good point. We'll look at that, but I don't, we're, we're trying to stay at a one curb cut. And again, if that's close to the street, our parking setbacks, 15 feet, the building setbacks, 25, and again, on a pretty flat lot, I'd like to think we could, we can try to save all of those. Yeah, good point.
Thank you, Mr. Werner. Commissioner Sands, any other questions? Commissioner Willie?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. More of a comment. We, when we did Plan 2040, we said we wanted to encourage infill, that we would fight for that, and this will have a pretty high bar because of Historic Resources, but I think it's, it's also our part to remind ourselves and the community that we want to, you know, use the footprint that we have within the city of Lawrence whenever we can. This is walkable to three schools, downtown groceries. This is what we asked for, so I'm, I'm very much in favor of it. And, and we will see a site plan at some point where all of those issues for the neighbors will be addressed.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Sands?
Rob Sands, Planning Commissioner. I agree with the assessment of Commissioner Willie. I'm, I'm comfortable with the rezoning request. It adds residential. We're, i- if you're reading the news, we're in a pretty tight residential market right now, so I, I think any move toward more living units and especially lower-sized living units, two-bedroom, one-bedroom, the demand for one-bedroom units is, is higher than it is for multi-bedroom units, two, three, and four bedrooms. So I'm comfortable at this stage moving this on. Over.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Sands, David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Struckoff?
I am also, Planning Commissioner Eric Struckoff. I'm inclined to support this, even though it's not going to have the mixed-use and retail on that, on the first level that I would love to continue to see in my neighborhood. I just live a few blocks away from this location, but I will support this because this is what we've asked for, and this is good infill. I think it's going to be a good project, and I'm supporting it.
Thank you, Commissioner Struckoff. David Carter, Chair. I do have a question for Sandy about the site plan. You, you mentioned, you know, this needs to come before Historic Resources Commission. Can you clarify how an eventual site plan will be considered? Is it staff approval, or does it come back before us?
Sandy Day, Planning Office. The site plan is actually an administrative review. That applicant would, would submit the site plan to Planning Office. Staff would review it. We would provide notice to property owners within, I'm sorry, the applicant would provide notice to property owners within 400 feet. Throughout that process, they would have the ability to notify staff and if, if it were to come up, the ability to appeal any kind of decision that would push the project to the City Commission if it went that direction. At this point, I don't have any indication that it would, but we haven't seen a, a fully-developed site plan yet either. Historic Resources is a separate but parallel process. I believe the expectation is that the Architectural Review Committee would be working with the applicant on some of the design that would go specifically to Historic Resources Commission when they get that far. This is the first step. Site plans do not code to the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much, Sandy. David Carter, Chair. I guess I'll just make my brief comment that I'm also supportive of this. I think this really falls, even if it's not a multi-use site, it falls within a kind of broader multi-use district, but we've got commercial, residential, institutional, and it really is, from my point of view, a pretty ideal situation. And of course, with the oversight of HRC and the design restrictions that, that Commissioner Ashworth called attention to. With that, I'd like to ask if there are any other questions or comments from Commissioners or if any would care to make a motion. Commissioner Sands? Commissioner Sands, I think I saw your hand go up first.
Rob Sands, Planning Commissioner. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone approximately 0.5 acres from CS District to RM 24 District based upon the findings of fact presented in the body of the staff report and forward that to the City Commission with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Sands, David Carter, Chair. Do I have a second? Commissioner Ashworth, thank you. Any further discussion before we go to the roll? Okay, Jeff, could I ask you to read the roll, please?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton? Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair? Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes 10 to 0.
Thank you, Jeff, David Carter, Chair. That brings us to Item 4, Consider Rescinding the Minimum Maintenance Road Designation on East 650 Road from North 1550 Road to North 1590 Road in Kenwaka Township. And I believe Avery is here to talk to us about this.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Avery Kerner, and I am a planner with the Planning Division. The item before you this evening is Minimum Maintenance Item 21-00001. This is a request by the Board of Highway Commissioners of the Kenwaka Township to rescind the minimum maintenance designation of East 650 Road between North 1550 Road and North 1590 Road. Again, I'd like to give a little bit of background information on minimum maintenance roads as well as East 650 Road, and then I will go over the process for rescinding minimum maintenance designations. The minimum maintenance roads are public roadways that are used very infrequently and therefore are not required to be maintained to normal road standards. In these situations, the Kansas Legislature allows the township to have these types of roads declared minimum maintenance. This minimum maintenance designation prohibits residential access, allows the township to reduce the frequency of upkeep on these roads, and removes liability from the township should someone travel down the road and suffer damage to their vehicle due to the condition and maintenance of the road. The item before you this evening considers discontinuing the minimum maintenance designation and returning full maintenance status to a stretch of East 650 Road located approximately 2.6 miles west of the West 6 Street in the K-10 Highway Interchange. Figure 2 in the staff report provided in your packet this evening provides a map showing the exact location of the subject road. East 650 Road between County Route 442 and North 1550 Road was originally opened in 1916 as a public full maintenance road and remained that way until 1992. At that time, the full half-mile stretch of this road was officially declared minimum maintenance by the Board of County Commissioners. Thirteen years later, in 2005, the northern 550 feet of this road was reverted back to full maintenance, leaving tonight's subject portion of the road still minimum maintenance. Since the minimum maintenance declaration in 1992, pre-residential entrances have taken access off of the minimum maintenance portion of East 650 Road. However, as I mentioned before, residences are not allowed to take access from minimum maintenance roads and are instead supposed to take access from full maintenance roads. Because residences currently take access off of the minimum maintenance portion of East 650 Road, the Kenwaka Township has been maintaining the minimum maintenance portion of the road as if it were designated full maintenance. The request to rescind the minimum maintenance designation is a corrective action to accurately designate the subject portion of East 650 Road as full maintenance. The process to label a roadway as a minimum maintenance road comes from the Kansas Statute 68-5, comma 102, and reversing that designation follows the same procedures. Douglas County effectively follows through four steps. First, the township chooses to proceed with the process of reversing the minimum maintenance designation. The township then sends notices to adjacent landowners and holds a public hearing where a recommendation is made and forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners receives and reviews the township's recommendation and then seeks a recommendation from the Planning Commission. Then it is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to review the request and prepare a recommendation to be forwarded back to the Board of County Commissioners. In the case before you this evening, the township initiated and requested the minimum maintenance designation for the subject road be rescinded, and they held their public hearing on October 13th of 2020. They forwarded their opinion to the Board of County Commissioners on November 4th, 2020, who through consent directed the Douglas County Public Works Department to proceed with preliminary work towards rescinding the designation. On November 18th, 2020, the Board of County Commissioners voted to unanimously approve a resolution commencing the process to consider rescinding the minimum maintenance designation and requesting a recommendation from the Planning Commission. Which brings us to tonight. As staff prepared this item, we did receive several phone calls from neighboring properties inquiring about the item and asking clarifying questions, but none of the callers were in opposition of this item. So once you've made your recommendation, the last step is for the Board of County Commissioners to review your recommendation, hold a hearing, and take action. If the Board of County Commissioners decides to rescind the minimum maintenance designation, typically the township would then be required to improve the roadway and then remove existing signage indicating a minimum maintenance road. However, in this situation, the Kenwaka Township will simply just continue maintaining the road as it currently does and will remove existing minimum maintenance signage along the road. The staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the request to rescind the minimum maintenance designation on East 650 Road between North 1550 Road and North 1590 Road in Kenwaka Township based on the findings presented in the staff report and forwarding it to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions should you have them. We also have Kevin Sontag with us tonight, is the Douglas County Surveyor, and he's been working on this project with me, and he's here to help answer any specific questions should you have them as well.
Fantastic. Thank you, Avery. David Carter, Chair. Mr. Sontag, would you like to say anything in addition to what Avery's presented?
Hi, Kevin Sontag, County Land Surveyor. I have nothing to add. I think Avery did a bang-up job. Just to reiterate, this is certainly a situation that is not going to change anything out there. In reality, the road is being maintained as a full maintenance road. It should not be a minimum maintenance road at this point because there are residences on this road. So we're not making any significant change to the area or the location. We're just making a situation right. So I, I, I think it would be hard, hard pressed for anyone to find a good reason to not do this.
Thank you, Mr. Sontag, David Carter, Chair. I don't know if there are any members of the public who would speak up on this, but I'll give folks the opportunity. If you want to speak up, please raise your hand digitally in Zoom if possible. And I will ask Kyle if there's, if you see anybody on Zoom or in the Commission Chamber raising their hand to speak.
Kyle Kobe with planning. I am not seeing any digital hands being raised, and there is nobody in the room to speak on this item.
Very good. Thank you, Kyle. David Carter, Chair. With that, I'll turn it over to the Planning Commission. I think, see, Commissioner Willie is ready to speak, so please.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. I am ready to make a motion, if that is all right with anyone.
I don't object unless anyone has anything else that they want to say. Okay, please. Go right ahead, Commissioner Willie.
I move to rescind the minimum maintenance road designation on East 650 Road from North 1550 Road to North 1590 Road in Kenwaka Township, forwarding that recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, the recommendation to rescind.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Do I have a second? Let's see, Commissioner Ashworth, and, and any public, any further comment, excuse me, before we go to the roll? Okay, thank you. Jeff, could I ask you to read the roll, please?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes 10 to 0.
Thank you, Jeff, David Carter, Chair. And thanks to Avery and Kevin. And let's see, I, we've a few items left on, quite a few items left on our agenda. I know we'll eventually want to go to recess, but I think we can take up one more item before we do. Let's, let's go to item number five. That's Consider Approving a Conditional Use Permit for Type 2 Home Occupation Use at 649 East 475 Road. And I believe Catherine is going to present on that.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Catherine Lee, Planner. So I am here to present the CUP item before you this evening at 649 East 475 Road. This CUP request is for a type 2 home occupation of 4 plumbing office, home-based plumbing office. Type 2 home occupations are required to get a CUP in the AG2 zoning district, which this is. In looking at CUP requests in the county, we look at the golden criteria, we look at the zoning of the area and land uses. This CUP is not requesting a change in land use. This is just lifting a restriction so that they can have a home-based office in a proposed accessory structure. The home-based business would take up approximately 1,800 square feet of that proposed accessory structure. The remainder of that structure would be just for personal use, storage around their dwelling and the rest of their acreage. So we also look at the character of the area. This particular area has similar zoning of ag and transitional ag zoning. When the code changed from having just a designation to AG1 and AG2, the AG2 zoning designation captured those parcels that are slightly less than 20 acres. And this is one of those, and there are several others in the area. Didn't change the use or the general nature of the character, but it did give those parcels a separate designation from the general A designation that was in the county. Suitability of the subject property for the restrictions as it has been zoned. Again, we're, we're not changing the use or zoning for this property. The CUP is only permitting a home-based office building. And there are numerous criteria for type 2 home occupations. I believe they're outlined in page, on page six of the staff report. So in analyzing what a type 2 home-based occupation is, there are certain requirements that have to be met. This request meets all of those requirements and wouldn't impact the neighboring or surrounding area, given the conditions that staff is recommending as part of this CUP. We also look at the comprehensive plan. This particular property is not in the urban growth area, so there are no immediate plans for developments in this area. One chapter in the comprehensive plan does relate, however, and that's Chapter 2, the environmental considerations and goals of the comprehensive plan. This particular parcel is part of a residential development parcel, and there is one small conservation area located in the northwest corner of that parcel. The particular, the particular development that they're asking for of their accessory structure would be outside of that conservation area. So this still would meet the goals of the comprehensive plan in maintaining those natural resources that are in the environmental chapter. Though staff's overall recommendation is that this CUP request does meet the criteria for review. Staff is in support of the Planning Commission making a recommendation, forwarding this on to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval. And I would be happy to stand for any questions or clarifications if you should have them.
Thank you, Catherine, David Carter, Chair. Can you tell me, is the applicant, do you know if the applicant is here?
I did see the applicant here earlier. I would imagine they're still here. His name is Charles Foltz, if anybody.
I believe I saw Mr. Foltz. Mr. Foltz, would you care to say anything to amend Catherine's presentation?
Chuck Foltz, applicant. No, I think she explained everything. We're just wanting to build a accessory building, and in that building, we want to just put a little office in the corner to run our plumbing company. Right now, we are running it out of an office in North Lawrence, and that's kind of, if you know where we're at, that's clear across the county from us. So we're just wanting to run it out of the house. We'll still have a, we'll get a storage unit in town for, to store the stuff for my guys and everything. So employees won't be coming out here all the time for that. We're just wanting to put the office in there. But like, like she said, the building's mostly personal usage.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Foltz. Appreciate it. David Carter, Chair. Let's see, if there are members of the public who would like to speak up on this item, as we've heard it before, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature, and I will ask Kyle to verify if there's anyone raising their hand digitally or in person in the Commission Chambers.
Kyle Kobe, I have no individuals to report on either front.
Very good. Thank you, David Carter, Chair. I'll turn it over to the Commission then. Any questions either for Catherine or for Mr. Foltz? Oh, wow. Let's see, I'm going to go for Mr. Commissioner Sinclair.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. I'm just glad I beat Commissioner Willie. Question for Mr. Foltz. Mr. Foltz, have you read through all the conditions that are suggested to go along with the CUP?
I have not read through all of them, but they've been relayed to me, and I'm somewhat understanding of them.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner, and that's okay. I'm not asking you to have them memorized. I mainly was just wanting to check with you about the hours of operation. I noticed it says Monday to Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. And I was wondering if you anticipated there ever being need to use the facility or the, the building for emergency calls, because I know plumbing issues don't take a rest at night.
No. Chuck Foltz, applicant. All of my employees take the company vehicles home. So when, when we do have nighttime or emergency calls, they basically just leave from their house. So there wouldn't be any travel, traffic in and out here at night or on the weekends other than myself and my family.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Foltz. I was mainly just trying to make sure we weren't hamstringing you in terms of operating to address emergency calls, but it doesn't sound like that would be an issue.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz. Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. Commissioner Willie, do you still have a question?
More of a comment. You've probably all heard it from me. I am a big fan of rural home businesses and kind of, you know, allowing businesses to, to do what is healthy for them. And in this case, I think this is an easy yes for me. It's not a retail. There aren't a lot of, won't be a lot of traffic coming there. We're not talking about truck storage or anything, you know, bigger like that. I think this is just a way that helps Mr. Foltz and, and his business to have a good quality of life, be able to work, you know, from, from home a little bit and, and support the rest of their crew that works from town. So I'm in favor.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Do we have other comments or questions from Commissioners? I guess I would just like to piggyback on Commissioner Sinclair's question, Mr. Foltz, and just double-check with, excuse me, yeah, Commissioner Sinclair's question, Mr. Foltz, and just double-check, you know, there are other conditions that are recommended here. For example, prohibiting exterior storage, also that, you know, exterior lighting is not covered. And just to confirm that you're, you're, you're comfortable with the, with the conditions that are outlined there.
Yes, Charles Foltz, applicant. Yeah, none of that, nothing is going to be contradictory to those. Like I said, we're just wanting to put the office in an accessory building, basically a pole barn that we want to build for personal storage, mainly because the dogs have taken over the office in the house.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Foltz. David Carter, Chair. Catherine, did you want to address that point?
I was just going to say, if you all needed me to go through the conditions specifically, I could certainly do that for everybody. I was just gonna say, if you all needed me to go through the conditions specifically, I could certainly do that for everybody.
I suppose considering an eventual amendment will need to account for the conditions outlined in the report. Perhaps you could just do that really quickly.
So let me list the conditions as they were in the staff report. And the first being that the conditional use permit would be administratively reviewed every five years by the Douglas County Zoning and Codes Department. The maximum size permitted for an accessory structure used for the type-two home occupations is thirty-six, or thirty-six hundred square feet in gross area. And so this structure shall not exceed that, or the use shall not exceed that. The exterior storage would be prohibited. And that goes along with the type-two criteria specifically for type-two home occupations. Hours of operation, this was just a suggestion, it was listed Monday through Friday, seven thirty to five thirty. That was to cover general business hours. The proposed conditional use permit does not contain exterior lighting, other than any possible building lighting for the entrance of the building. If there is lighting proposed in the future, the owner shall submit a lighting plan for approval by the Douglas, Orange-Douglas County planning office prior to installing any exterior lighting. Approval of Douglas County building permit application is required prior to construction of the ancillary building that will house the type-two home occupation use. Then any surfacing for the extension of the driveway and that parking area to the south of the building shall meet the requirements as set forth by the Douglas County zoning regulations. And the last condition is that the approval of any signage would have to go through Douglas County sign permit application. That would be required prior to installing any sign for the property.
Very good. Thank you, Catherine. David Carter, Chair. Do I have any other questions or comments from Commissioners or perhaps any motions? Commissioners Ashworth.
I'm ready to make a motion. People are ready.
Please.
Sharon Ashworth, Planning Commission. I move that Planning Commission recommends forwarding the conditional use permit for a type-two home occupation use to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval based on the findings of fact found in the body of the staff report and subject to the following conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth. David Carter, Chair, do I have a second? Commissioner Struckoff, thank you. And is there any further discussion before we go to roll? All right, Jeff, could I ask you to read the role, please?
Jeff Craig, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes ten to zero.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. We do have four more items on our agenda, so I'd like to suggest that we take a recess at this point. I'll suggest six minutes so that we reconvene at eight twenty-five. Thank you.
Kurt, you ready? All right.
Just about everybody's back.
Are we unmuted?
Folks in the chamber, ready?
Sorry. Mr. Chair, room is ready?
Fantastic. Okay. Let us go to item number six on our agenda. Consider approving a request to rezone approximately forty-seven point one acres in the fourteen-hundred block of East nine hundred Road from Ag one to clustered preservation. And Mary, you're gonna be presenting on this?
Yes, thank you, Mary Miller, City County Planner, and I'll share my screen again. So as you mentioned, this is a rezoning request for approximately, I'm in the wrong one, I'm sorry. Thought it would start where I had it. One moment. I keep going to the wrong one. I don't know what's happening. Oh, I know, I'm, I'm probably clicking. Yes, I'm sorry, yeah. It is a rezoning request for approximately forty-seven acres from Ag one to CP Cluster Preservation. And before I get into it, I just wanted to kind of explain the density differences between the three zoning districts in the county that permit residential development. Ag one allows one dwelling units for twenty acres. Ag two allows two dwelling units for twenty acres. CP doesn't list a number of dwelling units, but the maximum number that's possible is four dwelling units for twenty acres. And this is not five-acre lots, primarily because forty percent of the total property needs to be put aside into a future development area to provide open space. But the total number of density would be four dwelling units per twenty acres. And that is explained on page two of the staff report. The location of the property is just west of the city of Lawrence. It's in the fourteen-hundred block of East nine hundred Road, and East nine hundred Road actually terminates right at the northern part of the property. And it's close to the intersection of Clinton Parkway and East nine hundred Road, and very close to the intersection with the K-ten Highway. It is just to the north and surrounds a property that's zoned LB, Lake Oriented Business. And I made an error in the staff report and listed it as GB, General Business, but this is one of our Lake Oriented Business districts. It's developed with a storage facility, has mini-storage and boat and RV storage. As shown on this graphic, the property is in both Tier two and Tier three of the urban growth area. The blue highlighted area is within the city limits, which is Tier one. The green area is Tier two, and the tan area is Tier three. Tier two is expected to annex before it develops, but if infrastructure or utilities are not available, some development is permitted before annexation. And the tan area, Tier, Tier three, is not expected to annex within the life of the comprehensive plan. However, as Tier two annexes, then those areas close to that in Tier three would be more likely to annex. The surrounding area is zoned Ag one primarily, and then LB, the Lake Oriented Business. To the east, we have CP Cluster Preservation. We have a rural residential development to the east. And we look at the land uses. We have agricultural. The mini-storage facility is labeled as industrial. We have single-family residential to the east. And then to the south, we have a large area of park, open space, which is the Clinton State Park. The proposed rezoning and residential land use would be compatible with the surrounding uses and zoning. And when we evaluate the character of the area, typically we look at an area that's within a mile radius of the subject property, assuming that's about the majority of the area where the impact would be felt. In this case, the property is adjacent to nine hundred Road, which is adjacent to K-ten Highway. And given the separation between the property and the residential properties to the east, we'll just evaluate the character of the area to the west of K-ten Highway, assuming that whatever occurs here would have no impact to the east of K-ten. This property shows a land development in the area. It's about one mile to the north, the west, and the south. We have residences marked with red dots. They show where residences have been developed. The yellow highlighted areas show businesses. The one that's identified as one is the mini-storage facility and the boat and RV. The area marked as two is a quarry, and the area marked as three is a landscape business. And then to the south, we have Clinton Park as park and open space. The interesting feature of the property is that it does not have connection to the road network to the west. As I mentioned, East nine hundred Road terminates at the north part of the property. It does go on south across Clinton Dam, and provides a connection with Clinton Parkway into the city or to K-ten Highway. It also connects to North fourteen fifteen Road, but that's a road that primarily goes into and only goes into Clinton State Park. There is no connection with East eight hundred Road. It does go up. There's a small road that goes up and connects to E seven hundred Road, but this is gated. The intention is that the only access into the state park is through their main gate. And so this property is a little isolated from the area to the west, and that to make a road connection, they would have to go around and come back to the west. And so in staff's opinion, the proposed rezoning and development would be compatible with the character of the area. We look for compliance with the area plan. The west of K-ten Plan recommends high-density residential adjacent to Highway forty and medium-density residential further to the west. The graphic on the right side shows the conceptual plan where they are planning to put in lots. And the hatched area is what they're designating as a future development area. And so they are designating an area along the highway, which would be developed after annexation with high-density residential. And then they're showing the lot layout and the future development area to the southwest where there's steep slopes. It's important to know that not all the lots shown on the conceptual plan would be possible. You know, they need to dedicate right-of-way for the proposed roads, and there can be other technical features that require adjustment when the property is platted. They could not have more lots, but it's possible. They would have fewer. And the west of K-ten Plan notes that the future land use map is conceptual and should not be used to determine precise zoning boundaries. And it notes that the land uses, zoning districts, and densities are the maximum recommended, and less intensive land uses, zoning districts, or densities are appropriate. And so the fact that lower density may be the final result, that would still be compliant with the area plan. And when property within the urban growth area is platted or divided through a certificate of survey, they're required to submit and include with the plat or survey a build-out plan. And this shows how the property would be divided into blocks following annexation. It's possible they may develop differently, but this provides a layout to ensure that it'd be possible to extend streets and infrastructure, utilities through the area conveniently. Blocks are typically two hundred to three hundred feet wide and six hundred to eight hundred feet long. They can vary somewhat, but if each residence is on a three-acre lot eventually in the future, that could be its own block. The blocks and the street layout include twenty-five-foot front setbacks around the perimeter. And this allows people to place homes, knowing that it's not gonna interfere with the extension of utilities and infrastructure. And it also provides notice to the landowners that after annexation, the intention is for these properties to be subdivided in the future. So the proposed rezoning and layout is generally compatible with the recommendations in the west of K-ten Plan, particularly since they do note that the boundaries are conceptual and that lower densities are anticipated and are also acceptable. The rezoning is not expected to have any detrimental impacts on nearby property owners. The water district indicated they would be able to provide water to the properties, but that the extension of lines would be the responsibility of the developer financially. And as the property has no direct connection to township roads to the west, the development should have no impact on the maintenance of those township roads. This is a graphic showing the environmentally sensitive lands in the area. There are prime farmlands, and these are outlined in green, they're at the north part of the property. Other environmentally sensitive lands are steep slopes. The slopes that are greater than fifteen percent are shown in orange, and then the yellow contours in the southwest corners can show you where the slopes are higher slopes by the fact that they're closer. There is a wetland shown on the Fish and Wildlife Wetland Mapper. I don't know that it's jurisdictional, but if it is, then it would also require protection, and it's shown with the blue dot. The proposed land division would protect the steep slopes in the wetland, but a large portion of the prime farmland would be developed, would be included with proposed lots. And as noted in the staff report, the impact on prime farmland should be weighted with consideration to the location of the property. A portion of this property is within Tier Two, and the remainder is in Tier Three. And the property is less than one-half mile from Lawrence city limits. If the eastern portion of the property, being Tier Two, is annexed, services would be available in the area, and it is possible that the remainder of the property would annex sooner than anticipated in the comprehensive plan, and sooner than other portions of Tier Three, which are located further from city limits. The development will impact environmentally sensitive lands in the form of the prime farmland, but this may be acceptable in this location, as annexation would be expected sooner here than in other areas of Tier Three that are further out from the city limits. This rezoning criteria is not met, however, in staff's opinion, this is acceptable, given the proximity of the property to city limits and Tier Two of the UGA, and the fact that it would be expected to annex sooner than other properties in the UGA. Briefly go over the criteria for suitability for agricultural use. The top-left graphic shows a soil capability class, and Class One and Two are considered high-quality soils. This property does contain Class Two, and these are outlined in bold. A portion of it is on the east side, most of that would be in the future development area. The portion on the northwest side would be developed. We look at the National Commodity Crop Production Index. The area in red is very low, it comes up at a point-two, probably because of those steep slopes. The area in green that's not circled is less than point-five, and the area, and just a little less than point-five, and the areas that are circled are just a little over point-five. So this comes at about average productivity. And at the bottom, looking again at where the prime farmland is, the green is the prime farmland, the blue is the farmland of statewide importance, and then the red is not prime or statewide importance. So in staff's opinion, given the proximity to city limits and the fact that this would be some of the earliest land to be annexed following Tier Two, would be the earliest land in Tier Three that would be annexed, the suitability for agricultural land use is about average, and it would be acceptable to develop this property. Early in the staff report, it discusses the comprehensive plan in more detail. I'm just going to go over some of the basic recommendations. The plan notes we should be encouraging agricultural uses and accommodating the demand for other compatible uses while protecting environmentally sensitive lands. So there's various values here, encouraging agriculture uses, protecting environmentally sensitive lands, and accommodating the demand for other compatible uses. So these are values that we need to balance when we look at rezoning applications. This, I'm looking at the Tier Three primarily, since most of the property is within Tier Three. And it recommends that we establish land use patterns accommodating Lawrence's future growth. We require residential development in Tier Three to cluster, maximizing open space and the plan for future incorporation into Lawrence. And that we protect and preserve natural environmental features and sensitive lands, and that we support agricultural uses. As I mentioned, these are a variety of values, and as the plan does not recommend a prohibition on the conversion of ag land, or provide specific guidance as to which agricultural lands should be protected, it's necessary to evaluate each property individually. And staff made the following assumptions as part of this evaluation. One, that land containing soils of higher or above-average agricultural productivity or potential are more important to preserve than those with less productive properties or less potential. Secondly, as land in Tier Two is expected to annex first to the land within Tier Two that is not required to annex due to unavailability of city services is more suitable for rural development, non-agricultural, than other portions of the urban growth area. And three, as the comprehensive plan recommends the clustering of residences in Tier Three, but also notes that this tier is not expected to annex within the life of the plan, properties within closer proximity to the city limits are more suitable for development than other properties within this tier. Directing residential development in Tier Three closer to Tier Two would be considered clustering, as new residential development would not be scattered throughout Tier Three, but would be located where annexation and urban development typically, when we think of clustering residential development, we think of clustering houses together and having that forty percent set aside, but this is another way to look at clustering. So when reviewing this rezoning application with these assumptions, staff reached the conclusion that, in this case, the conversion of agricultural land to residential use is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And the environmentally sensitive lands listed in the comprehensive plan vary from those included in the zoning regulations. Zoning regulations include prime farmland as environmentally sensitive lands, these are not listed in the comprehensive plan. So of those features listed in the comp plan, the property contains steep slopes and wetland. And the concept plan proposes the protection of these features by placing them in the future development area, which this area cannot be developed until the property is annexed and further divided, developed. The city also has environmentally sensitive land protection measures, and these would be implemented with any land divisions following annexation. The proposed rezoning is in conformance with Plan Twenty Forty's recommendations related to the preservation of agricultural land, the protection of environmentally sensitive lands, and rural residential development in the urban growth area. And so staff is recommending approval of this rezoning request and forwarding it to the county commission with a recommendation for approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is present.
Thank you, Mary. David Carter, Chair, would the applicant like to amend or speak up in response to Mary's presentation?
Good evening, this is David Hamby with PG Consultants, representing the applicant. I'd be, well, first want to say I appreciate staff's work on this. There's a lot of work associated with this recommendation in staff report. We support the recommendation. There's a couple items, I think, I wanted to point out. One was, because of the lack of connectivity to rural roads, all of the access goes down E nine hundred Road, which is a chip-sealed road. And so I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that. So it's pretty hard to access for farm vehicles without traveling on chip-sealed or paved roads. Also, as Mary mentioned, the staff or the comprehensive plan supports residential use in this area. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hamby. David Carter, Chair. Are there any members of the, if there are any members of the public who'd like to speak up on this item, please raise your hand in Zoom, and I'll ask Kyle to confirm if there's anyone soliciting to speak.
Kyle Kobe with Planning. I do not see any digital hands going up, and there's nobody in the room to speak on this item.
Thank you, Kyle. David Carter, Chair. With that, I'll turn it over to the commission.
Four questions to Mary or to Mr. Hamby. Well, I guess then I'll kick things off. I guess I have a question, oh, forgive me, Mr. Ashworth, go ahead. Thank you for waving instead of just raising your hand.
I could have been frozen, so. My chief concern with this project is, while I understand it fits much of the criteria because of its proximity to the city, my chief concern is its proximity to Clinton Lake. And I've note on, just looking at Google Maps, and I believe in the report stated that there's an ephemeral stream corridor on that property with the steep slopes, and that would run into Clinton Lake. And Clinton Lake has enough water quality problems for me, for this project to give me pause with that ephemeral stream located on that property. I'm not sure if development is appropriate there, given its direct connection to Clinton Lake. And I'm also concerned, I have to admit, about the prime farmlands, but I understand that it is, the future development is planned for there. So my chief concern is a connection to Clinton Lake. So I don't know if the applicant or Mary Miller would like to address that particular concern.
I can say that, if I can, if that's okay, this is David Hamby with PG Consultants. The state requires with any development that the applicant would get a notice of intent for stormwater pollution prevention plan, and that is going to require how the construction happens. Now, because these are big lots, they'll be pretty spread out, so it's not really high-density development. Also, a lot of times, you have less runoff, less non-point source pollution in a residential-type neighborhood than you do in a farms-type situation, just because of the type of farming and so forth. So I guess, depending on what exactly you're concerned about, is it chemicals, is it silt, sediment? So that may be addressed by how the residents handle their yards.
Thank you, Mr. Hamby. Mr. Ashworth, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, Planning Commissioner Ashworth, just that it was my main concern with the suburban development would be chemical use, fertilizer use, mostly the fertilizer use on large yards like that. That is probably the chief concern with water quality, is the runoff of nitrogen-based fertilizers in the lake.
Thanks, Commissioner Ashworth. David Carter, Chair, did you want to address any of those concerns to staff? Any? Okay.
That's just my general concern. I mean, I understand the plans there, so, but with suburban lawns, there's a potential for a lot of fertilizer runoff.
Okay, thank you. David Carter, Chair, do we have questions from other commissioners? I guess I'll, you know, I'm only going to speak up after nobody else wants to. So Commissioner Willie, please, go ahead.
Only I had the same rule. Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner, I had a question for Jeff. I know that the modeling that was done for the development tiers, you were the chief architect of that, and it's based on the availability of services now and into the future. Do you have any idea what the limiting factor might have been that put this property into Tier Three as opposed to Tier Two? It probably isn't fire access, because there's roads, roads close to town, sewer or something like that. And if I've put you on the spot too much and need time, I'm sure there are other questions in between.
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. No, definitely not on the spot there. I was just trying to make sure I had my notes in line there, but I believe at this point in time, it was a dual concern of water and wastewater service availability, because I believe the fall line and the way that the ridges are working in the area would be a sizable investment to get sewer into the area and then down to where it should be going towards the treatment plans, and then also for the water service to be able to get over to the area itself there. My understanding, and just off my notes, is, yeah, fire response was not the primary issue that drove the line between Tier Two and Three, excuse me, between Tier Two and Tier Three in this area. It was mainly in the service provision for water and wastewater, and what that would, the infrastructure would take to get it there at that point in time.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Willie, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Do you have another question? Okay, very good. I guess I have a question for staff about, we've heard how this property conforms in large part to the west of K-ten Plan. But I'm, there seems to be kind of an internal contradiction between the west of K-ten Plan, which is very grand, extends out for miles, you know, north of Highway forty and all the way south to, you know, the southern extent, you know, by Clinton Lake. And if you could speak a little bit to the interaction between Plan Twenty Forty and the, you know, the three development tiers that are outlined there, and what's laid out in the west of K-ten Plan, do you see, although this particular proposal is partially conforming to the west of K-ten Plan, do you see the west of K-ten Plan, you know, is made in some part out of date by Plan Twenty Forty? Does it need to be updated, and what would be the implications on this proposal?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. The west of K-ten Plan was developed in
Up to the horizon twenty twenty, so a lot of its backbone and basis would have been in the previous comprehensive plan. And, you know, we'd kind of looked at this, and I believe the Planning Commission is also aware of this, is, you know, a lot of these plans are going to have to be looked at and evaluated and revised in ways to kind of bring them up to meet that threshold that we have in Plan Twenty Forty. You know, on the whole, when we look at this, excuse me, on the whole, when you look at a sector plan in relation to the comprehensive plan, there is going to be a bit of tension between the two documents, where the comprehensive plan is broad and a much higher-level look. The sector plans tend to be more of a medium height, kind of an in-between level, before you start getting into the development codes. There is that kind of inherent difference that you would see between some of the language in Plan Twenty Forty, and what you would typically see in a sector plan. Staff has identified this as one of the sector plans that we'd like to update and take a look at, because it does have a lot of, you have a kind of a different aspect of it with the tiers, and what you would have seen with the other part of that one. But, you know, on the whole, I think a lot of the items that we see in the west of K-ten Plan are still valid and still hold a lot of truth to it. It just needs to maybe be reframed a little bit more to look through Plan Twenty Forty's lens and a little less from Horizon Twenty Twenty's at that point in time.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Other questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Shanklin?
Greg Shanklin, Commissioner. I, this is a question for Mary Miller. I'm trying to understand what the total developable capacity of this forty-seven acres is over time. Right now, we see nine large lot, you know, dwellings. What's the total build-out going to look like?
Are you talking about like after annexation?
Yeah. Understand the total build-out. How many dwelling units would we see on this property?
Well, it's hard to tell when it comes in. You have, I think, about nine, five or nine acres on the highway would be high-density, which could be twenty-four to thirty-two dwelling units per acre. So you're looking at hundreds of dwelling units right along the highway. The remainder of it would be more medium, it could be like RS-seven, RS-five duplexes. Once it gets annexed, it could be divided.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to put Commissioner Ashworth's question about runoff, which is, you know, very clear that that does drain into the Clinton reservoir, into a little bit more accurate perspective. We're looking at a lot of runoff there.
Yeah, and actually, I didn't identify it itself, Mary Miller, Planner. Right, when it comes into the city and it divides with every preliminary plat, they have to do a drainage study, and they're required to retain the stormwater runoff on the site. So there'd be a lot of additional studies and work done when it develops, so those kind of intensities, densities.
Thank you, Mary. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Shanklin, does that satisfy your question?
It satisfies that one, yeah. Uh, it, it satisfies that one, yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you.
If I could follow up.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Um, I, I, I just wanted to pause for a moment and lament the loss of, of seventy-three percent of this property that constitutes. Uh, either uh, prime agricultural land or land that's at least of statewide importance. So it's, it's virtually the entire lot that we're talking about. Um, so I, I understand its proximity to, to Lawrence, uh, it's a shame that if, if Florence were to have a, a green belt. Uh, this would certainly be on it, um, but instead it's going to be developed, um, in the near future.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin, David Carter Chair, other questions or comments from commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Willie?
A, a little bit of a follow-up to Commissioner Ashworth's uh, comment and, and taking that to another step, so if we get nine. Nine, three acre lots, um, each of those then will be, have a, will still need water to come to them, that three acre minimum requires um, rural water. To, to service them, um, because you'll have, that's the minimum acreage to have a septic field. Um, otherwise you need five acres to have a septic field and, and a well, that, that's not being considered here, so. Already water has to come to these sites, but each of those nine then would have a septic field on these um, silty clay soils and silty clay loams. Um, so we've got um, a, an issue there of something that would be going into the lake, um, those systems are designed. To do well most of the time, in a wet spring, they, those systems do, do fail, um, that's part of the design. Um, there's really no way around it on the kind of soils we're talking about, um, however. What um, M- Mary Miller's comment was that, that um, when things are annexed into the city, some of these higher densities. That the runoff and the drainage has to be accounted for, and so there actually might be a, a benefit to the, the more. Dense urban development that has protocols in place for that, then maybe the large lot residential for, for the county.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie, David Carter Chair, um, I, I guess. My, my concern is kind of the inverse of what's been mentioned already, um, you know, considering that the West of K-ten development calls for. Uh, or, or anticipates, you know, high to medium resi- uh, high to medium desident, uh, gosh, excuse me last time. High to medium density residential development, um, a- as part of, uh, you know, a, a broader, a, a broader sector plan. There's also, you know, the provision that was, that followed the, um, the, uh, the, the smart code. Um, work that was done in the two thousands to um, uh, anticipate traditional neighborhood development. So, um, I'm not sure if this is how, how to, uh, 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 to, um, address this to staff, whether it's Mary or Jeff, but. How compatible would the current uh, proposal be with an eventual build out to a traditional neighborhood development? Uh, Mary or Jeff?
I would, this is Mary Miller Planner, I would let Jeff answer that, we haven't done any traditional neighborhood development since that. Factor was added, you know, we've had the ability, we've done a very small projects, so as far as we're onto transacts. You know, putting those into actual action, I can't say that I'm very knowledgeable about them at all, but perhaps Jeff could answer that.
Thanks, and, and uh, David Carter Chair, I just want to interject that the reason I'm bringing this up is because it is explicitly mentioned in the sector plan. So Jeff, do you have any thoughts on that?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, was trying to pull up the map real quickly to take a look at um, this area. This was one of the plan areas that was included when the. Smart code or chapter twenty-one was adopted by the city, so it does have a. What would be basically a future land use map for that code, that's a part of the area here, and I was trying to. Orient myself in the area correctly, and I believe if, if the map and I are in agreement, uh, this area would have been. On the plan envisioned to be in the tier, excuse me, T four, T five, which be your. General urban and urban center designations in the smart code, it was kind of, it was your. Uh, higher level uh, development patterns in the smart code, and, and for those who are kind of new to that one. Uh, the urbanizations are tier three, four and five, three is called a suburban. Four is a general urban and five is the urban center, so it was more of your, your higher level items on that one. Now, the, the smart code specifically, when you get into the tier, the T four and the T five area, tends to talk about. And generally, and I might have this a little bit uh, wrong just off the top of my head, but it would be more of a mixed use. Um, higher story development potential out there than what you might typically see, so it. Speaks more about uh, the height and architecture of the buildings and the way that they engage to the streets a little differently than what we would see as part of a. Uh, future land use map under the traditional West of K-ten plan with the medium, low and high residential density districts, but. So the quick scan of that one, this area was kind of identified as being in that, that tier, T four, T five region of that plan. Now, that would require someone to rezone out of chapter twenty in the land development code and into. Chapter twenty-one of the smart code, which would change the applications that would come forward under the city purview for that one, so it wouldn't necessarily be. Site plans and those kind of items, it would be development applications that would fit under twenty-one and not under what we typically see in chapter twenty.
Thank you, Jeff, sorry to put you on the spot with that, but I appreciate the, um, the response, uh, David Carter Chair. So I guess, you know, following up on that, my, my concern with this is. Sort of it's, it's, um, it's, what's the word I'm looking for, i- i- it's isolation from a broader plan. Um, while it partially conforms to the sector plan, we anticipate that the sector plan needs to be updated, so. On one hand, it's being justified as being conforming to a plan that we think needs to be updated. Secondly, um, the, the, the plan explicitly mentions a scenario for development that. Uh, this would have to be um, um, rezoned to accommodate, so. I, I just have, have difficulties with this, not as in isolation, but in, in, it's, it's longer term implications, it seems to me that. Also being adjacent to, uh, you know, just south of the interchange at uh, Bob Billings. Um, you know, the K-ten interchange, that this is likely to become a magnet for, for more development to the north. Which is almost entirely in tier three, so we talk about this as being an exception to the plan that we just. Adopted last year, um, but I, it seems to me that it would accelerate. Um, development into, you know, fur- further areas of tier three. And I don't really have a question for staff or for the applicant, but that is a concern that I have. And uh, I don't know if any other commissioners would like to speak up or, you know, if, uh, Commissioner Sands, please.
I just wanted to, uh, Rob Sands, Commissioner, I just wanted to, um. Just offer a different perspective on uh, a concern on tier three, not that I don't necessarily share it, but. Those, those tiers were developed based on judgment from staff and an attempt to be predictive. Uh, and, and so when we get into those areas along K-ten, I think it, I think it becomes really, uh. Difficult to be accurate with the predictions of what air, what tracks are going to. Uh, be more attractive to development first, so, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying about. We should prioritize development in tier two, uh, over tier three, but that, that. Especially that strip along, and along that area is so narrow anyway. That it's hard, it's really hard for me to delineate when it, when we're talking about hundreds of feet, now. Having said that, I don't necessarily. Love the idea of such large lot sizes that are in proximity, close to tier two. With a, you know, that, that area may be slated to be annexed sooner than others in tier three. And to have those, those huge lot, lot sizes in there, it, it's not going to be compatible with, with our development pattern. In the rest of the city, so that, that, I, I don't know, just some thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Sands, uh, come, uh, let's see, I believe, uh, Mr. Voight, um, is, uh, I'd like to say something, uh. Please, uh, Chad, go ahead.
Yeah, I, it's probably a little inappropriate, but uh, Chad Voight, Douglas County Public Works Director. And I just wanted to point out, this is an ideal time, um, we just had a study, a study session with the county commission on the exact topic that you're talking about. Uh, last week, um, it was informal and we had a couple of new commissioners, obviously. Um, and we kind of danced around, you know, rural developments and impacts on infrastructure. And one of the, the strongest, um, points that came out of that was what you're talking about, how compatible? Is rural development when it's very close to city limits, and I would just say, um. From my perspective, when this, when this rezoning first was proposed, my comment was that it should annex and develop city standards. And that, um, is keeping in mind that if it does not, then it will never develop to city standards. And so the questions that you're asking, yeah, all you have to do is look across K-ten to the east and see. The rural or the, the county, they're not really rural, but they're county developments, and the city limits. Come up to those and they slam against them and they stop and it's a point of resistance and, um, you know, you have these cul-de-sacs and, and these dense. Urban neighborhoods that are wrapping around these large county lots. And from an infrastructure standpoint, our snowplows have to go all the way up to Bob Billings and over, um, on Bob Billings Parkway. And down and back across and all the way down nine hundred road, down to those houses to push snow. And it's, it's really incongruous with our overall operation, the city. In, you know, the flip side of that, has to drive around all of that to service their areas, so there's a cost. Long-term to the city for infrastructure in areas like that, I've got sort of a presentation that, um, we gave that, you know, is. It's kind of targeting this issue that if not now, sometime I would like to share with you. Um, but I feel like you're, you're asking if this can be developed to a more dense, uh, future, and I would say, no, it will not. And you would have to tear those houses down, and I don't think any one of us is ready to tear houses down on the east side of the road. To say, well, that was supposed to be more dense, so we need to go in there and tear these houses down and redevelop this ground. And what you're really suggesting is that a person with three acres could somehow be a developer. And develop their three acres to a, a more dense use, you know, that, that you're not going to get twenty adjacent three acre lots to all. Be twenty developers and make that happen, so it's, it's sort of incongruous, it's an impossibility really. And there are plenty of examples around town of where that's happened in the past, and it doesn't work very well, so I'll stop there and, and let you take it.
Thank you, Mr. Voight, David Carter Chair, um, thank you for, for offering that perspective, um, Commissioner Carpenter?
Tim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner, uh. Chad just kind of went over a lot of what was going through my head because I know that the city commission has been. You know, thinking about this type of idea about the lot sizes. Um, and what happens when annexation comes to those lot sizes and how infrastructure can be provided. So I, I guess I have one, one question for Jeff, uh, which utilities actually go across K-ten at East fifteen hundred road? I'm pretty sure water does, but are there others?
Yeah, the, um, the sanitary sewer system trunk line was put in there before the trafficway. With the idea that it would have to go that way, it actually runs right up that valley about, oh, two-thirds of the way up to Bob Billings. Uh, there's a manhole, I remember it was real visible years ago on the west bank of the trafficway. And the earlier question about how the tier would have been drawn across that area at an angle. That does appear to relate to that ridge for sanitary sewer service. And I think the lot that we're talking about here, the parcel, the sixty acres, uh, would. Be able to be served with a small lift station, which is commonly done throughout Lawrence. Um, however, I would say that the, the sort of the dog lake to the south that runs, runs toward the lake is probably way beyond serviceable. Uh, for sanitary sewer, so, so earlier the, the idea that the stuff down. South was going to be reserved for more dense development, that's actually the flip of what can happen. The, the area down to the south should probably always remain as open space and dense development should be up at the north. Uh, but, but sanitary sewer, your, your question, sanitary sewer is on the west side, uh, waterline would be ideally city. Uh, extended out there because that's a long run for the rural service to get down there.
And, and Chad, Tim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner again, um, East nine hundred road stops at the boundary of this property right now. But that road bed still extends up to. North fifteen hundred, isn't that, couldn't that road be extended again in the future?
Uh, no, Chad Voight, Douglas County, um, the KDOT plans for that area are probably going to make that impossible. Uh, when we do go to the, the divided highway, that's going to get used up and, um, I, I really see the future road network there having to basically go. Uh, along the north edge of this boundary with a collector that somehow winds its way back. Uh, you know, the school has, has made an investment in a property just west of there. Um, we need to be looking at collector roads that go west from this property and find their way to Bob Billings and, and then serve multiple. Uh, residential developments, so I, I don't think running parallel to the trafficway is going to be the long-term answer.
Okay, thanks Chad, Tim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner again, you know, part of what's in the report is the annexation, the required annexation agreement. Um, not to contest annexation and agreement not to protest formation and benefit districts for public improvements. So I think, um, what's coming out here is this tension on what happens in tier two. And I would argue that the tier three that's on this, this lot is a false tier three because. We're talking about this area up to north fifteen hundred and probably west to where the school. Board is ready to build if we have the development pressure out there, which require other. Services to be extended by the city to annexes, and these lot sizes are just problematic. We're doing that as, as Chad pointed out, um, also I would. I am curious, the road system in this proposed development, would it be township maintained? Or would it be a private road?
I assume that's a question for me, Chad Voight, Douglas County, um, this would. Well, in theory be a township road, but in all of the townships that only maintain gravel roads, any paved road becomes a county maintained road. And, um, over the years have been many attempts to sort of put an end to that creation of. You know, uh, additional paved subdivision roads that then the county has to maintain. Waukerusa Township has the funds and the equipment to maintain pavement, Kenwaka Township does not.
Thank you. Tim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner, to me, I think what we're looking at is. We have a lot of issues coming both from the county and the city side that argue against these large lots. Um, and argue in favor of a better plan that takes into consideration. Um, a larger scale annexation, if that is even. Something that. Has any desirability to it, that would be on the west side of K-ten from north fifteen hundred down to this, and I don't know how far west. The plan is as a, as a unit for city infrastructure, roadways and public safety. I think putting in these large lots now, especially with the other concerns raised about currently putting in septic tanks. Um, and runoff this close to the lake and eating up this prime ag land that's right there. I, I think there is just so many issues that argue against doing anything there right now until we have a better idea of how to proceed. So I'm inclined not to be in favor of this tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter, David Carter Chair, um, Commissioner Willie?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner, uh, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Carpenter, uh, I'm willing to give up. A good agricultural land close to the city limits when it serves the city's purposes, which is density and housing, I'm not willing to give it up for, um. I'm not willing to give it up for nine lots that are going to create problems down the road. I would also suspect that a little bit, a greater density that could happen or is maybe in the plan to happen closer to K-10 there could maybe pay for a lift station, whereas the nine lots are never going to be able to make that investment happen. So I, I am inclined to, to not support this item.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie, David Carter, Chair. Do I have further questions, comments from planning commissioners? For my part, I want to thank Commissioner Carpenter for his summary. I think he articulated my concerns better than, than I had with my initial questions and commentary. I, I, I recognize the short-term request from the, from the applicant, but in the longer term interest of the community, I am inclined to oppose this. I would entertain, but invite other, other questions from commissioners or I would entertain, I don't know if at a point where anyone would be able to make a motion. Anyone have any other questions for staff or for the applicant? Or from, or for Chad? Oh, I thought I saw someone raise their hand. Commissioner Willie.
I, I move to deny the request to rezonate approximately 47.1 acres from AG1 to CP District based on the findings presented in the staff report and forwarding it to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation for denial.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie, David Carter, Chair. Do I have a second? Wow. Commissioner Ashworth was the first to raise her hand. And any further discussion before we go to a vote?
Commissioner Carpenter.
I'm Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. I just want to thank Chad Voight for actually sticking out our meeting and being here to answer all these questions. It's incredibly helpful. We don't often have county representatives that can address the issues that come up. I, I would hope that we'd have people more often because these are very serious and many of us don't have the experience with the county to address them without being able to have those questions answered. The biggest thing would be to finally have a county attorney sometime that would be available for some of these questions that we ask city attorneys about regularly for those in the city. So thank you, Chad. And I know Tanya was here. Tanya's still here, so thank you, Tanya, too.
Agreed. Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter, David Carter, Chair. Thank you, Tanya. If there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and ask Jeff to read the role, please.
Jeff Crick.
And I think we just, forgive me, I just want to clarify, the motion is to deny, is that correct, Commissioner Willie? Very good, thank you. So Jeff, could you please read the role?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes 10 to zero.
Thank you, Jeff, David Carter, Chair. That brings us to item seven. Consider initiation of the rezoning of property within certificates of surveys that were in the process before and exempt from the Board of County Commissioners' moratorium on land divisions within the urban growth area. And Mary, I believe you're going to educate us on this.
Yeah, this is a house item, had two certificates of survey in the urban growth area kind of in this general location that were being processed while we were revising the zoning regulations. All of the ones that had been done before the zoning regulations were revised automatically converted to the CP District. These two, since they were still in process, their zoning did not convert. So right now they have non-conforming lots or RDPs just due to the fact that they have the former zoning, they have Ag One or Ag Two. And so this initiation would allow us to match the zoning to the land division, which has already occurred. So they've already created the parcels. One of them has been sold, so we're just requesting, and I, I can show you those locations, but that was in the memo, it shows you the two locations. One was a three parcels and the other one had more, but I'll be able to answer any questions. But that's primarily why we're requesting this initiation is just so that we don't have non-conforming parcels due entirely to the timing of our zoning regulations.
Thank you, Mary. I don't believe there's any applicant in this case, and so I should, David Carter, Chair, forgive me, should ask if there's any public commentary. If so, please raise your hand digitally on, on Zoom and I'll ask Kyle to please confirm if there's anyone soliciting input.
Kyle Kobe with Planning, there's nobody in the room with us here to speak on this item. And at this point, I do not see any hands going up on my Zoom screen.
Thank you very much. David Carter, Chair. With that, I'll turn it over to the commission for discussion. Any questions from commissioners? And I guess I'll ask, Mary, have you had any, I believe the report said that there was no, no one contesting this, no, have you had any responses from the public aside from just agreeing and thanking you for your time?
I know, just one of the owners of the certificate of survey wanted to check and, and see if I thought it would go through and if he should be here. But I haven't had any calls or questions from the neighbors.
Okay, very good, thank you. David Carter, Chair, any other questions from commissioners? Necessary, entertain a motion. No one wants to speak up. I've asked my question. Commissioner Sinclair.
I guess sort of Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner, observation, maybe looking for confirmation. If we initiate the rezoning, that in no way is a valid judgment on our part as to the underlying rezoning request. I mean, we can, it may come back and we decide to deny rezoning, correct? Mary?
Correct, right. It would, it would just be treated like any other rezoning. Once it gets initiated, it's just rather than having the property owners pay for the application, staff is just asking for it to be initiated.
Thank you, Mary. Commissioner Carpenter.
I'm Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. This is, this is one of those items, very specifically, it would have been helpful to have a county attorney here. But I kind of think that these were underway, they were put on hold, they were already started under the old code and we'd be hard pressed to say no, especially since anything that comes back would be evaluated, just as we did the last item as a fresh item in front of this. This is just to say, okay, the moratorium is over. Let's, let's go forward with this application. And then, Mary, will there be things coming back to us on these or is this going to be under the old certificate of survey where we're not going to see anything?
There won't be anything else on these properties. They've been divided. The, the parcels are created. And so these weren't actually in the moratorium. The moratorium was on things outside the UGA. So they were exempt from the moratorium, but they just went ahead and were allowed to continue processing. And so they, they processed throughout the regulation revision.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Commissioner Carpenter, David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Carpenter, do you, you seem like you may have a, a follow-up question or?
Tim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. It's just unfortunate that, that these have are pretty much done and over without us being able to evaluate them because of the old certificate of survey process. I'm so happy we don't have that anymore so that we can have these other discussions about future land use in Tier Two, Tier Three, what the difference will be in all that, which was absent with this. And I'm really, it also goes to emphasize the importance of the, the effort to reevaluate the new subdivision regulations that are underway by Tanya and Mary and other county staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter, David Carter, Chair. Further comments, questions? Motions? Commissioner Sinclair.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner, I can make a motion.
Please.
Move that we initiate rezoning of properties within CSU-19-00546 and CSU-20-00045 as identified in the staff memo and listed in the legal description in the attachment to it from AG1 or from Ag One District to CP District.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair, David Carter, Chair. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Willie, thank you. Any further comments before we go to a vote? Okay, thank you. Jeff, could I ask you to read the role, please?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes 10 to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. That brings us to our last regular agenda item. Item eight, consider initiation of a text amendment to revise the subdivision regulations for Lawrence and the unincorporated areas of Douglas County as needed to accommodate the approved Udora urban growth area per the interlocal agreement. And Mary, you're, you're, you're on, you're on deck.
Okay. Mary Miller, City County Planner. Udora recently established an urban growth area. They did it through an interlocal agreement with the Board of County Commissioners. And so this shows their tiers. Tier one is the city of Udora and also unincorporated islands that are surrounded by the city. Those just need to annex, so they don't, they are not the subject of this text amendment. The yellow areas marked Tier Two are areas that they would like to have annexed before they develop to a certain degree. So the restriction would be that they would only be able to divide as far as our exemptions in the subregs would allow. For instance, we allow the 20-acre agricultural subdivision boundary surveys, we allow homestead exemptions, but no certificates of survey and no Platts. So this would be one of those tight restrictions. So when the land comes into the city, they have large lots with which to develop with urban uses. The red boundary shows the urban reserve. This isn't a tier, but it kind of provides notice that this is where they expect their urban growth area to expand to in the future when Tier Through Two has been annexed and they want to go a little further. So basically, we just need to go in. Our subregs don't have anything restricting this, but we can just add some provisions noting that the subdivisions that we have are not allowed in Tier Two of the Udora urban growth area.
All right. Thank you, Mary. David Carter, Chair. I, yeah, again, we don't really have an applicant, so I guess we'll ask, is there any representative from Udora in the meeting tonight?
They weren't able to attend, but the city manager and their planning consultant indicated they might be watching it. They, when we do this, any draft language we make, we've provided them to make sure that we're providing the restrictions. The restrictions are noted in the interlocal agreement, but we'd want to make sure that, you know, we have what they feel comfortable with before it comes back to you. And I think they'll be here next time when the actual amendment comes forward.
Thank you. David Carter, Chair. This, are there any members of the public, if there's any members of the public who wants to speak on this particular item? Please raise your hand. And Kyle, I'll just ask you to confirm if there's anyone wanting to speak up here.
Kyle Kobe with Planning, there's nobody in the room to speak on this item and I do not see any hands going up in, on my Zoom, Zoom screen.
Okay, very good. Thank you. David Carter, Chair. With that, I'll turn this over to the commission for questions to Mary. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Willie.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. I'm excited to see the city of Udora having these conversations and also engaging us with those conversations. We know as the Lawrence Douglas County Planning Commission, there are a lot of other stories that are happening in the county, especially around Udora and Baldwin that are a big part of our overall picture, but we don't get to talk about that or engage with that. So I think this is a, a start of something and I'm, I'm, I look forward to when we get to talk about that text amendment, having some conversations with folks from Udora.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie, David Carter, Chair. Other questions or comments from commissioners? And just to clarify, with this, we're just initiating the, the text amendment. You say, Mary, the, the actual amendment will come back to us for consideration or what's, what's, if you could clarify the next steps?
Right, yeah, we'll develop the draft language and we'll work with Udora to get that language finished and then that will come back to you. And then you'll vote on it, we can make changes or just take it on to the county commission and then they would adopt it with a resolution. And then that would be in effect. And then their interlocal agreement will go into effect. So until this is all finished, they don't actually have their urban growth area finalized. But it'll be the final step.
Very good, thank you. David Carter, Chair. Other questions from commissioners or perhaps motions? Commissioner Struckoff?
I would be happy to make a motion if we are ready for that.
I believe we may be, please.
I move that we initiate a text amendment to revise the subdivision regulations for Lawrence and the unincorporated areas of Douglas County to accommodate the approved Udora urban growth area per the interlocal agreement approved by the county commissioners in October of 2020.
Thank you, Commissioner Struckoff, David Carter, Chair. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Willie, thank you. Any further discussion? Jeff, could I ask you to read the role, please?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes 10 to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. That concludes our regular agenda. And we now have a supplementary item. Consider letters prepared by Planning Commissioner Chair and Vice Chair related to the board's membership composition and appointments. And I think, Jeff, you offered to sort of give us an overview of this process.
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. This is to go back to your October 28th request to have the letter, or to have a letter drafted and prepared. And you'll also see as part of this agenda packet, I included the 1966 ordinance resolution that was the document that founded the Joint Planning Commission and also kind of the, the office and its whole there. So in working with the Chair and the Vice Chair, we prepared two letters for the commission's consideration this evening to kind of look through and, and give guidance and direction on those items. So happy to turn it over to Chair Carter to kind of talk through those items and also to Vice Chair Sinclair for that aspect.
Very good, thank you. So David Carter, Chair, appreciate that, Jeff. So in considering this item, the, you know, going back to what I read as the motivation for this request was recognition that when we lost Commissioner Weaver several months ago, we became acutely aware of the, you know, the valuable input that we get on a regular basis from commissioners who reside in unincorporated parts of Douglas County. especially when it comes to some of the thorny, more esoteric matters of land use and land management in rural areas. And thankfully, we have, we've had Commissioner Willie and now Commissioner Shanklin to provide some of those insights. And the suggestion was, you know, to codify this in some way by requiring or asking the Board of County Commissioners and the City Commission to modify the, you know, our founding document in a way that explicitly calls for a particular quota of the membership to reside in unincorporated areas of the county. So Vice Chair Sinclair and I worked with Planning Staff, and the drafts that you saw in your packet today are a result of that. The, so I have mixed feelings when it comes to this request. And of course, you know, I respect the motivations behind this proposal. And as Chair, I would commit to signing any correspondence that leaves this Commission with majority support. But I struggle personally to justify a move that even proposes to mandate the composition of the Planning Commission based on a place of residence. So the drafts that you see probably reflect that ambivalence. And, you know, I recognize that the work of the Commission is informed by expertise from many different areas of experience. And those are things like profession, education, upbringing, gender, race, ethnicity, and place of residence, which is the material thing that we're being asked to consider. My concern is that in the 52 years that this Commission has existed, the only conditions that have dictated membership have been residents of Douglas County and lack of employment with the city, with the city or the county. Of course, the primary business of this Commission is to advise in the application of land use policy. And of course, the majority of the land in Douglas County is unincorporated. But only 21% of the population of Douglas County lives outside of Lawrence, and that doesn't count Udora and Baldwin City. And in my opinion, it's more important that effective land use planning within the county begin with good land use policy. And that's the business of the Board of County Commissioners and not the Planning Commission. So those are my comments on this proposal. That said, I'm now, and I would invite Vice Chair Sinclair as one of the other co-authors to, you know, make any comments about this before we open this up to discussion. I guess, I think we do have other members of the public perhaps in attendance, and we need to open it up to their input before we go to the Commission. Commissioners, Vice Chair Sinclair.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. I don't have all that much to add to what Chair Carter said. I think he encapsulated the reason there are two drafts, one of which is much more concrete in the ask than the other. The other one is more of an affirmation of what our goals are, I guess, and our needs, and the hope that that will be pursued in the future. The only thing I guess I'd add, and I don't, not to get ahead of the discussion too much, but I would echo the Chair's concerns about locking the Board into having certain seats that are dedicated to individuals based on where they live. Because I'd have concerns, though well-intentioned, of, I guess, unintended consequences. I do worry that there could be instances in which there are individuals that reside in the city and who are more than qualified to talk about some of the issues that are soils as people that live in the county. And there may be people that live in unincorporated areas, rural areas, that don't have a lot of the expertise and specific knowledge that we've come to really appreciate from people like Commissioner Willie, Commissioner Weaver in the past, and now Commissioner Shanklin. And so because of that, you know, I've got concerns about requesting that we have a quota of people that live in the unincorporated rural areas. I think we had some discussions about maybe laying out criteria, to the extent we have a quota of the types of expertise that we'd, or inexperience, I guess, that we'd really be looking for that could provide some of that support and context for a lot of our discussions. But that's just, I think, something that we need to discuss. So that's sort of in addition to what the Chair has said, where my thoughts lie on it at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. I imagine we'll have quite a bit to discuss, you know, within the Commission itself. But I do see members of the public still in attendance, so I'd like to invite anyone who's in attendance to please raise your hand using the Zoom function, Zoom feature.
And again, I will ask Kyle to confirm whether he sees any raised hands either on Zoom or in the chamber.
Kyle, Kobe with Planning, just giving a moment to see if I, I do not see any hands being raised in my, on my Zoom screen, nor is there anybody in the room to comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. David Carter, Chair. With that, I'll turn this back over. I don't know.
Commissioner Carpenter, I'd like to call on you first since you were the person who raised this request back in October. And I wonder if you have any responses or any observations based on what Commissioner Sinclair and I have said so far.
I'd like to hear other comments before I go.
Very good. Thank you. David Carter, Chair, other folks want to chime in? Commissioner Ashworth?
Sharon Ashworth, Planning Commission. Just a general concern that if we have some number that are on the Planning Commission from county versus city, if that opens us up to public demands for other geographic representation. West Lawrence versus East Lawrence is the first thing, of course, that pops to mind. So I just wonder if establishing that quota, is the word you use, if it opens us up to further demands from other geographic locations or divisions.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth. Other observations, input? Commissioner Sands?
I had a, just a question, a clarification for Commissioner Sinclair. When you were mentioning trying to find the right mix of experiences, I don't, I think I heard it incorrectly. Were you saying that we could develop other criteria that hit toward those levels of experience or expertise or education that achieved the same things that this was meant to achieve? Or did I hear that incorrectly?
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. I didn't articulate it very well. That's probably why you didn't catch it. But I think that's essentially the gist. The worry I have is that is that perhaps by having a quota of seats that are filled by inhabitants of rural Douglas County, we're maybe going to miss some of the things that we're shooting for? Not necessarily. I think having someone that lives in rural Douglas County is probably already a leg up on a lot of the issues that rural residents have than someone that lives in the city. But I'm just thinking, I can imagine there being circumstances with people that live in the city limits that have a lot of the experience, expertise over the course of their life that would lend itself to some of these discussions. And I mean, one example, I think, is I believe, you know, Commissioner Willie has indicated that she's lived in the city limits before. And she does it now, but someone with her knowledge and experience can be really helpful, even though she lives in the city limits, more so perhaps than someone that lives in rural Douglas County that, you know, maybe lives out there on, for instance, you know, on a large lot and commutes into Lawrence to work. So those were my concerns, just locking us into something that maybe will not produce what we're actually looking for and keep us from opportunities to have really good people that would address rural Douglas County-type needs that maybe don't live out there. And so one thing that came up was, could we, and I don't want to jump ahead too much, Chair, because I think this was maybe your suggestion in some of the conversations we had, was if we're going to ask for a quota, do we need to also be specific about what it is we're looking for? It's not just that we want someone who lives in rural Douglas County. It's that we want someone who can help out with some of these topics that those of us who live in the city and have really no rural life experience can address.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. David Carter, Chair, I just want to speak up in response to the last thing you said. And I think you're very close to what my intent was with raising that. It was, in fact, as an alternative to a specific quota, basically including some sort of statement of principles or something closer to a job description of the kinds of expertise or insights that would be expected of a planning commissioner. And not, which could be gained from someone living anywhere in the county. So with that, I don't know, Commissioner Sands, did you have any other question to Commissioner Sinclair and me on that? Okay, very good. Thank you.
So yes, Rob Sands, Commissioner, so I was with you up until you said kind of a job description of planning commissioner. I think right now I'm somewhere in between. So initially, when I read these letters, I liked draft letter option two, because it was direct. It says what we need in, and I got to say that, you know, we're trying to play the law of averages, right? We're trying to find someone who lives in those unincorporated areas, not necessarily to represent the views of the unincorporated areas, but generally, that person or persons that live in the unincorporated areas may have that level of expertise, that level of lived experience that others may not. I get that. I value that. I liked the idea when it came up. Now that I'm hearing the discussion, you know, an understanding that we report to two governing bodies, and it's the governing bodies who, with their priorities as governing bodies, get to, and of right should pick planning commissioners when those vacancies become available, that in a way reflect the values of those governing bodies because those governing bodies are popularly elected. And so it's kind of that downriver effect of representative government. So I am into the idea of an option one letter that says, please consider these types of, please consider a diverse set of experiences that represents Douglas, you know, represents portions of the Douglas County community, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess right now in between an option one, slightly more specifically worded option one, without going to the very specific position description, job description. Over.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Willie?
I may likely have a few things to say, but I wanted to take a step back. The letter talks about, you know, thanking the Commissions for ensuring the diversity of this board. And I take issue with that by quite a lot. Every time that I've been in charge of our training session or had a voice in our training session, I've been asking, like, can we talk about who we are and who we aren't? And I guess I just haven't been specific enough. I think we are too white, too urban, too middle-income, and too educated to really reflect the population that we serve. And I think that's maybe the start of the discussion that we should call out. This particular topic only addresses how we interact with land use. And that's why there's a question of the urban versus rural.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. I think you're beginning, you're cracking open that issue that I have had, that I raised in saying, you know, there are a lot of different things that make someone qualified or that give people particular insights when they serve on this board. And it's not just where they live. We deal with lots and lots of issues that, and it's not just urban versus rural. As Commissioner Ashworth said, it is within Lawrence. You know, we have a considerable income disparity within, between different parts of the city. And, you know, planning as a profession, planning as a practice, has been instrumental in codifying and ossifying those divisions. And in part because representation on those boards historically did not recognize the people who were going to be disadvantaged by those practices. So, you know, I have a great deal of respect for the particular insight that gave rise to this, to this request. I think the challenge that I have with it is that either we limit, well, I find it difficult to limit it to just representation based on where people live. I think it opens up, I think, to, oh, gosh, I'm sorry, it's getting late enough. I can't remember who raised the question. Maybe it was having representation contested based on lot, you know, many different things where we end up having restriction placed on membership that are, you know, we've got to have one person that represents this population, one person that represents another, and we end up having a very strict code of representation. So that's my concern. Commissioner Butler, I think you wanted to say something.
I just would echo what Commissioner Willie said, and, you know, part of looking at it, we are the Lawrence-Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Commission. I think it's vital to have people from the county be able to voice their knowledge, concerns, experiences with living out in the county. So I don't necessarily know about, you know, saying we have to have three people from the county or something like that. But I think it's imperative to have people from the county on this board. I mean, most of us live in the city, and it's a different perspective. I do appreciate Commissioner Willie a lot and Commissioner Shanklin for their opinions. I think it's valuable. It gives me a different perspective. I've never lived in the county. I've always lived in the city, so I just get a different perspective from them. And I think it's really important to not lose that. And I guess my reason for wanting to support something that had a certain number of county appointees was that we don't lose that perspective. So that's my thought with that. And I think it's very important to do something to support that. And I think, you know, I don't know if we want to set a number, but it's, we can't, it doesn't make any sense to me to have a planning commission that only has city appointees on it. I just think we would lose a lot. So I'm inclined to support something that has, and as far as using the word diversity, I don't quite like that word, because when we talk about diversity, city versus county, that's not diversity in my mind. And I, from Commissioner Willie's comments, I don't think that's diversity in her mind. So I don't like that word in this, I don't like that word here. But I think there just needs to be a some kind of combination of representation. So those are
Thank you very much, Commissioner Butler. David Carter, Chair. Other points of view? Commissioner Struckoff? Thank you very much, Commissioner Butler, David Carter, Chair. Other, other points of view? Commissioner Struckoff.
Planning Commissioner Eric Struckoff. I, I've, I've felt very strongly that, that I would like to have some way of guaranteeing that we would, that we would always have somebody from unincorporated Douglas County here to, to give us those important perspectives. I am a city kid. I've lived in this, in the country. My mother still lives in a very remote part of Missouri. But that's, that experience and her ongoing experience is not, for instance, an agricultural experience. These are limestone hills and river valleys. And the idea, the ideas of preservation, for instance, in that setting are a little bit different than, than we talk about here. And so despite the fact that I felt like I had plenty of time in a rural setting and I have family members who are still there, it's a different sort of rural experience that, that I wish to draw on from my fellow commissioners here in the planning commission. And so while I wanted to guarantee that we would have a certain number of, of rural voices on our mission, I, I do worry that we, that, that geographic residence is probably, is probably not the way to do that. I, I think that what we're trying to do here is codify what should be the, the advice and, and decisions of the county and, and city commissions. And that I think we might be better served by, as the first draft here suggests, a, a direction, a wish, a, an intent that those unincorporated voices remain on, that we, that we make it clear that that's, that's an important part of our makeup. And that, and that certainly the county commission should, if we wish to say that, that we would ask them to prioritize that. I would assume, and I can't speak for any county commissioner right now. I'm not, I'm not sure we have any rural residing county commissioners. And so to me, as a city resident who was appointed by a county chair to my first advisory board position back in the nineties by a county commission chair who lived in the city, I, I just want to reiterate that we have to make that a priority for our county commission, certainly. The, the, the county commissioners are not required to appoint somebody who lives outside of Lawrence or Udora or LaCompton to, to any board position, including planning commission. And I sit here as an example of that. To my knowledge, neither is the city commission required to, are they limited to city residents as appointees? I don't think they are. And so there is no codification of, of where those appoint, appointee of either commission should come from. My feeling in overall, in taking a step back is that the best we can do is to reinforce our wishes commission and we think the, in my view, the higher goal of our community is that we make sure that all those perspectives are represented on those, on this commission or as many as we can. I'm not sure the numbers that, having a set number would do that. What if we can't meet that? What if, what if, what if there's not a qualified city, you know, appointee or nobody wants to take the job, you know, can, can this county step in and appoint one instead? Without that, of course, taken to its logical conclusion, we could get down to, without that set number, we could get down to zero county or city appointees if for some reason that, that worked out that way, which I think would also be very, very unfortunate. Obviously, it's given the makeup of this commission right now and its historical makeup, that, that, that seems like if that happened, that would slide off to the direction of not having any county commissioners, county residents on our, on our commission. I don't see that happening, but I'm just talking about a logical conclusion and, and, and thinking about that out loud. But I, I think the best we can do is to, is to express our intent and our wish. Is it direction to the county commission? I wouldn't call it direction, but the way it's phrased, you know, is that we value those voices and we want to make sure they're on there. I mean, putting a number on, on it would, would codify that, but I'm afraid that we would limit ourselves as several of us here have said tonight. So I'm inclined to support a letter that expresses our wish. I'm not sure I want to go with a number.
Thank you, Commissioner Struckoff, David Carter, Chair. Other input? Commissioner Shaquelin from rural Douglas County.
Actually downtown Clinton County.
Thank you, sorry.
But no, I, when I first saw the, the two letters, my initial response was, letter number two was to the point and it would ask the county commission to adopt a resolution that is much like the one that applies to the county board of zoning appeals. All, all members must be a resident of the unincorporated Douglas County. But then, you know, I, that seems to divide in a way that is, I think, antithetical to the concept of a joint commission to have five county members and five city members. And yes, there's some overlap in a way that there isn't with the board of zoning appeals, but there's still similar subject matter. And I, but, but with that idea of, you know, dividing the commission into two camps, I, then I started to think that maybe that first letter is the better one because it is about diversity. Geographic diversity is helpful, but it's hard to set a number on. No fewer than, say, four Muslim. We might not achieve that even. It's just, I understand that at times it's difficult to find people that are with the right experience and education and residence as well as other attributes. So I, I, I wonder if, if including the word geographic in the concept of diversity in that first letter might not be a solution. Among other things, there are places of residence. At least it would, otherwise, when you look at that letter, you know, if I'm trying to read it as a commissioners, what is it that they want me to do? And I think what we want them to do is, is, you know, consider the residency as well as other things. So anyway, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaquelin, David Carter, Chair. Other insights? Other input? Commissioner Carpenter.
Jim Carpenter, Commissioner. You know, it's just that saying, we don't know what we don't know until somebody that's actually experienced something different from us brings it up and brings it to the table. And then we have to think about it. And the whole, the whole start of this was my experience as being a commissioner that growing up, I lived at the edge, you know, out my front door was the city. On my back was farmland as far as you could see, and that, that's what I had. I wasn't, never felt like I was just one or the other. And it was, but I've lived in, in Lawrence now for, since 1992 in the city. And so I know what happens in the city. I know those types of things. But I don't know what it's like to have an airstrip on my neighbor's land. I don't, I don't know what it's like to have, you know, big shops where they're building equipment or running businesses, you know, in my neighbors, you know, a quarter mile away. I mean, if that was here in the city, I know what, what that experience is. But I don't know that experience out in the county. I don't know what it's like to have dust from the road coming. I take that back. I do know what it's like to have dust from the road coming through the window screens every time a car downs down the road. But I don't know that now, you know, from having just lived in the city. So there are all these issues that we don't even think about until those members on the commission that actually live in those areas bring them up for us to think about and consider. And that's where my original request came from. And you have to remember, we're not directing the commissions to do anything. What we're saying is we want you to consider the composition of our planning commission. And, and we'd like you to consider whether a certain number from the city and a certain number from the county would give us better results. You know, this is what we're asking you to consider. The first letter is just like, it's, it's like Commissioner Shaquelin said, what, what are we asking? The second letter at least asks for something. Consider whether there should be a set number. And we're not, this isn't unique to a request coming from the planning commission. Look at the Historic Resources Commission. Every role has a specific requirement. Every, you know, this is not an unusual thing. Look at, look at the Community Police Review Board. That has specific requirements to be on it. A lot of the other commissions have requirements. Our, our planning commission was formed back in 1969. And you had to, look, that was a good old boy network. They all knew who each other. They knew who they wanted on here making, making decisions, who's scratching who's back. And we're, we're past that now. At least this group is not like that. And that's entirely evident by the types of decisions we're making and how we're looking at larger issues and not just one application that comes in. And that's what my request is about, getting those perspectives. And, and just tonight, look at what we had before us. We had one issue in the city. Everything else was out in the county. Some of those were at the fringe where we had better information. Some were the southeast section of the county. What do we know about that other than driving through on, on the gravel roads once or twice? You know, to go have a look and not even really have a sense of where it is in relation to other things. Like I said back in December on that one I had tonight, I was unaware Edgerton and Gardner were that close to, to where this development pressure was, you know, until that came up from the residents. And that's, that's what I'm hoping we can prompt from the county commission and the city commission as a discussion. Because issues of diversity and equity, they have to apply, but it is not just geographical area. In fact, I, I agree with Commissioner Butler and Commissioner Willie. That's the wrong word for geographics. We have other issues with that. Just look at who's sitting here tonight, you know, as, as Commissioner Willie brought up. I mean, we're, we're people that had time to do this, we're people that said we're willing to do it, we're people that had time to put in the effort to do it. And you know, there are other people out there and it might be hard to find people if it is limited to geographic area. But people need to know that this is available and they can be on this commission and it should probably foster something out in the community. This, we're looking for people all the time. And let us know who you are and, and get involved. And, and I think the most, the most jarring thing we had tonight is here we are sitting, the Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Commission making a decision for Udora, Kansas. What are we doing? I mean, I, I, I kind of felt the flip flop of probably what some of the, the rural residents on our commissions have felt. I'm making decisions about, you know, what goes next to this house and this inner city block. I know nothing about that except what I hear from the other commissioners, you know, and, and yet this is what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to make recommendations on things that impact people that we don't share experiences with. So I, I'm just hoping that we can come up with some request that, that emphasizes maybe some requirements, maybe a certain number. But I want, I would hope we could send a letter that actually prompts a discussion, not just, oh, this is all wishy washy and, you know, nebulous and feel good stuff. Let's, let's have a hard discussion about it. The city's starting a hard, hard discussion on the form of government. Are we going to change our form of government? Which brings me back to Commissioner Ashworth. Yes, it might come down to, there might be pressure on the whoever's making appointments on behalf of the city, this commission, to have different parts of the city or different economic statuses represented on the planning commission. Because we are definitely making recommendations that affect people differently in different parts of this community. And they're not all represented here. And that might be a very, that might happen. But I think we should have the discussion and I think we should send a letter that actually prompts a discussion rather than, yeah, this sounds good and we want that, but we don't have to really commit to anything. So if we come up with requirements for membership, I mean, who can be appointed, then we're no different than the other commissions. I mean, this one, I, I don't understand why we don't have that because of how important this commission is. There are no, no other commissions with the power. Board of Zoning Appeal seems to have more power in some areas than we do because you only recourse is to the court. But here we can stop things by our votes. We can stop amendments to the comp plan. And we're doing it for people all over the county and I think we have to have the inputs from those people. So I'll just shut up and see where we go. But I think, I think we've reached a point that we're having discussions at various levels of government in our community about representation. And we might as well start it here. And I think sending a stronger letter can prompt that discussion. And I think given the composition of our current county commission, they are open to having that kind of discussion. Because of the platforms they ran on and they, they won, was to have those larger discussions. So I look forward to having that. And if it turns into having a joint meeting, I think we should do that. You know, with, with the other commissions and just kind of have a study session and talk about these things. Because I think it's all going to dovetail as we go down the road. Because this task force for the former city government has its first meeting on March 15th. And that's going to talk about whether we have, recommend elected by districts, whether it's a separately elected mayor. It's going to keep this, the criteria, the framework is to keep the manager commission. But dividing up responsibilities and who's on the commission or the number of commissioners, those types of things are all up for discussion. And there's going to be a community discussion about equity and, and all those types of things in our representation. And we should be part of that because we're past the good old boy time of everybody knows each other and goes out to dinner with each other before they come down to vote on my friend's application at planning commission. So let's, let's push it a little farther while everyone's listening.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter, David Carter, Chair. I would like to say just a couple of things and then I'll recognize Commissioner Willie. I think in a way, your concerns, your expressed concerns are the identical inverse concerns to mine. As long as you're talking about this letter as the beginning of a conversation, then I think it makes sense. I think as the foundation for a concrete proposal, what makes me profoundly uncomfortable is that it only carves out one type of representation for one type of expertise that guides the business of this commission. You know, getting back to Commissioner Ashworth's question, you know, I, I think it would, about what this, what that would begin. I think, you know, as you seem to be comfortable with maybe the logical conclusion that there would be a specific quota. I think, you know, as you seem to be comfortable with maybe the logical conclusion that there would be a specific quota that would be filled by every member of the commission. And perhaps that is a conversation worth having. Getting back to your comment about the good old boys network though. You know, I, I, I would call attention to the fact that the city commission and the board of county commissioners are the opposite of a good old boys network at this time. And that representative democracy where the chair of the commission makes an appointment based on their particular concerns of, you know, where they feel, why they got elected and by whom, and to fulfill what particular constituencies that by not imposing specific requirements, we actually allow that process of, of democratization over time to, to fulfill itself. And so I absolutely agree with you that this is a conversation worth having. I just don't necessarily agree with the remedy because it seems to me that it is a, a work in progress already trending in that direction. And with that, I, I recognize Commissioner Willie.
Very well, planning commissioner. I wanted to thank Commissioner Sinclair for his faith in my perspective wherever I may live. And I, this might be the time when I confess that I was born in Chicago. And I went to high school in St. Louis and I lived in Germany. And I had never once lived outside of town in my whole life until as an adult, I moved out to rural Douglas County. So the perspective that I have and bring here is because I have embraced my neighborhood and am involved in the social structure of my neighborhood and hear from people around me who have had, you know, five generations of experience on the land here. I didn't have any of that perspective or understanding when I lived in town. It's, it's because of where I live. So I can hear the quarry, you know, when they're, you know, using dynamite at the quarry. It's many miles away, but I can hear that and I can hear the neighbors' dogs from a mile away pretty easily. My, my experience now is rural because where I've lived. I would also say all of us in our heads could picture the old gas station at Seventeenth and Massachusetts. If we didn't, we drove by it, right? Because that's what we do, that we have to understand that property to make a good decision. I drive to town regularly. I live out of town, but I drive, I'm in Lawrence regularly. It's no big deal to drive by a property that I can't already picture. How many of you drove by or could picture East six fifty road between North fifteen fifty road and North fifteen eighty, fifteen ninety road? The, the item that we had that was in the southeast part of the county, it's a half an hour away from anybody here. Probably the closest person to that property is Commissioner Carpenter. He's probably our, the only person, one of the few people in the east half of the county that is represented here. Nobody just, you have to make a special trip, right? Nobody's just happening by and I'll swing by that property before the meeting. As it is easy for us to do in town, no matter where we live. So that's the geographical aspect of it. Most people have an understanding of, of an urban lifestyle because most of the people that we're connected to, all of our kids, anywhere in the county, go to school in town. In Baldwin, Udora, Lawrence, there are no rural grade schools. So everybody has, you know, and anyone who has kids or has connections with kids, those are all in town. So the, the flip side is not true that everyone who lives in town has friends, relations and regular acquaintances that they visit in the county. We are a land use body. We have a lot of issues with other kinds of equity and who is represented here. But we are also a land use body. And we do our best and most important work, like we did tonight. When we are understanding what are the needs of the city that correspond with what we do with urban, with rural land use. We have to have both perspectives to do that work. This, the city commission can't do it. They wouldn't see these items that are county items. But we are protecting the city when we evaluate them with those eyes. And we can do that because we have a, a various set of backgrounds based on land use, based on where we live. We, we do important work and I don't think we should shortchange that. I think that if we as a body do not value rural voices, nobody else will. Not our current county commission and certainly not our city commission. And I think the city especially will suffer for that. Because of the, the way these issues are interplay and intertwined. I'll have more to say later, but that's it for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Input from other commissioners. Commissioner Butler.
I just have a question. Are we, is kind of the purpose of our discussion, is it to pick one of the letters or to try to modify language in the letter or what are we doing?
David Carter, Chair, that is a fantastic question, Commissioner Butler. I'd like to turn that back over to Jeff. I mean, I know what I, how I would answer, but Jeff, when you and I were talking about this, in preparation for this meeting, you had some thoughts. Could you respond or give your, your perspective in response to Commissioner Butler's question?
Certainly Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. You know, I, I kind of think about this as maybe having a couple of different avenues and options to it. I think, kind of based on the discussion we're having tonight, I think it's fine for, kind of take the feedback and for everyone to reconsider the letter and come back maybe with another draft. Or, you know, kind of give guidance to go for another draft as an option there. Cause it doesn't seem like there's a consensus around option one or option two necessarily. But kind of go and, and craft an option three to bring back for the, the board's consideration at a future date. Could also spend time, kind of in a very similar Plan twenty forty style wordsmithing. We could kind of spend some time with the letters in that regard. We could also just kind of look at the letters that they are and go forward on that item there. But, you know, it seems to be from, kind of an outside perspective, it seems to be that there's not a consensus around option one or option two. But maybe, you know, kind of going back and, and coming up with option three is a possibility. And bringing that back to the commission for discussion and consideration at a future date.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. I'd like, just like to kind of distill what you just said. I mean, I think getting back to the conversation we've heard so far, we've got the option that expresses a series of concerns about representation and the points of view that are brought to the planning commission that may or may not explicitly express the urban rural divide and, you know, and, and the quality of decisions we're able to make. The other more abruptly makes a recommendation that as a couple of people have, have put it, kind of spurs a hard discussion. It's not necessarily intended to make a concrete proposal. But it, it, it sparks a discussion particularly within the county commission about the ability to, you know, support decisions in the, about, about proposals in the unincorporated area based specifically on, on, on representation, on residency there. And, you know, a couple of people have spoken up saying, you know, they, at first they thought option two and then maybe they thought option one. I'd just like to ask, I think it was Commissioner Shanklin and Commissioner Ashworth, if I'm not mistaken, who, who expressed those points of view. And I'm just wondering whether the subsequent discussion has altered your points of view. I mean, you know, we, I mean, just forgive me for, for recognizing the, the obvious that we're, we're bearing down on ten thirty. We could choose, you know, if we can agree, I think, see this is almost like a two-step process. If we can agree, have a consensus on which direction we're intending to go, then we can, we can try some wordsmithing. But I think first we need to reach some sort of consensus as, as a body of what we're trying to accomplish with this, with this ask. And so I'll just like, I'll ask Commissioner Shanklin, based on the discussions that's taken place since you brought up that perspective, you know, has your point of view changed at all?
Greg Shanklin, Commissioner. I don't think my perspective has changed that much. I, I, I think there's, it's very important that some degree of consideration is given to the residents of county-appointed planning commissioners. But not to the point of a, a specific request letter like number two. But rather that we, I think, interject the notion of the residency as part of the, the first letter. That we, we would like to encourage the county commissioners to consider in their appointments that there's a contribution that unincorporated, you know, county residents can make that the, perhaps city residents are unable to bring to the conversation. So that's the, the revision that I would make would be to letter one, but to just bring more specificity to what it is that we mean by diversity. Just adding that geographic element.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanklin and David Carter, Chair. And I'd like to call on whoever it was who also raised that point of view. And forgive me for forgetting whether it was Commissioner Ashworth or Commissioner Sands, who, who said, you know, was it Commissioner Sands then? That you thought of, you know, at first you thought option two, but then you thought option one. And I'm curious whether the discussion we've had has changed your point of view.
Not necessarily. I think I'm, I think where I'm at is I, I tend to prefer the, the option that does not ask either governing body to put specific qualifications on serving. I kind of look at this more of like a, you know, vision or value statement and strategic planning. And I, I don't know that anyone, I guess, well, I mean, I guess aside from some notable exceptions on both the city and, and county commissions, not many of our elected officials on the governing bodies have as deep of a relationship with planning. Like I said, with a, with a couple notable exceptions. So, you know, at this point in time, going back to a couple of the comments that were made, the current city commission, the current county commission, maybe these, maybe these values are already baked into the cake a little bit. Maybe, maybe they're not. I, I think what we're trying to hone in on is, is how do we replicate in future commissions? The, the invaluable contribution of members of the unincorporated areas to, to things that are becoming more critical in land use decisions. It, it's not just how much of the county is open space for, you know, passive recreation or active recreation. I mean, we're, we're getting into stuff that, that, you know, thanks to members of our, of our commission or crash course doctorate level instruction in, in soil qualities and, and sustainability. And I think what we're trying to hone in on is how do we maintain that level of expertise and concern and for, for future commissions? Is there a solution? I don't know that I can think of one right now. So I don't know, just thoughts.
That's helpful. Thank you, Commissioner Sands. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Struckoff.
Eric Struckoff, Planning Commissioner. I'll go back to, I believe it was Commissioner Carpenter who said, and you may have echoed this, Mr. Chair. But this is an entree. This is a, this is the start of a conversation perhaps. And maybe if we look at it that way, you know, for instance, are we going to have a face-to-face on Zoom, of course, on Friday with elected officials? I don't want to spoil anything or, or ruin the agenda, but perhaps that might be a moment to bring it up. It's, it's not new to anybody. It's, it's, you know, they know we're thinking about that. And, and we're not going to, we're not going to have the entire discussion then. But that might be another way of just kind of introducing the topic in a fifteen-minute hour or some portion thereof. And so I think, I think using this letter or whatever our means of introducing the discussion officially, if we think of it in those terms, is, you know, we're not, maybe this isn't, this isn't the, the solution. You know, we're not, we're not here to present a solution in this letter. But we're here to, to invite our elected officials to a discussion, our county elected officials in particular, to a discussion, you know, that we seem to think they'll be amenable to. And may have already given this a good deal of thought already. So I think, you know, I, I don't think we're ready to wordsmith a letter at, at this point. I, I agree with you, Mr. Chair on that. But I do think we need to introduce the, the topic and, and perhaps a letter that is crafted to do that might serve us better. Aside from that, the only thing I'll do is muddy up the water a little more and say, what about somebody from La Compton and Udora or Baldwin? That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Struckoff, David Carter, Chair. I'm glad you brought up our, our orientation, which in less than thirty-eight hours, we will be meeting with the city, with city commissioners and members of the county commission. And so to some degree, as far as starting the conversation, I don't know how many of them are going to listen to this meeting before we meet, before we meet with them, you know, in person. But at, at that point, I think the conversation to some degree has already been started. I might propose, and I'm not in a position to make a motion, but I, I might propose that the vice chair and I meet after the orientation, consider the perspectives that were raised during the, during the retreat, the, the, you know, meeting that we're going to be having very soon. And then come back to the planning commission with a single document that can then be wordsmithed. Commissioner, I see Commissioner Carpenter shifting in his chair. And I would like to ask, you know, I know you've, if, if that would in any way begin to, you know, formalize that conversation that you, that you would like to see started.
I, I just pointed out Zoom body language is not the same as in-person body language. Sometimes you're just sitting in the same hardback chair for too many hours. But I don't, I don't know what's going to happen Friday, but I, I hope that I think everyone, we've, we've talked about a lot of issues and probably wrap this up tonight. And I, I would not be surprised if one of the commissioners brought this item up on Friday. How much time should be devoted to it then or just as an opening to talk? But I think, I like your idea that after that, that we rework a letter that points out concerns and maybe it can list concerns and issues that we want them to discuss. And I don't think we should be shy about asking them what we want, you know? We should just say, here's, here's what's important to us as a commission. And we want you to talk about this and address this. I mean, we're in it. As well as commissioners, they are our representatives and we get to ask them these things. So I think we should. Cause I think it's time to have these discussions. And this has been one of the best discussions I've heard about what we are the whole time I've been on the planning commission. So I really appreciate all of that. Because I, I'm glad that we're, we, the ten of us are going to be part of the discussion on how this commission is viewed by the city and county commissions in the future. So I look forward to what happens on Friday and what comes next.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Sinclair. Commissioner Sinclair.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. I wonder, I mean, I think, I feel like we're scratching on issues that are larger than just the makeup of rural versus city residents. And, you know, it seemed, I guess I'm a little unclear. I think we're, I think what we're talking about right now is still specifically with respect to representation of people in rural Douglas County. I wonder, I guess, I'd first want to know, like, maybe confirmation that that is where we're going? And then secondly, is it worthwhile for us to continue this conversation in some way about the makeup of our, of this commission as a whole, particularly with, you know, being relatively homogeneous? Can we keep this conversation going somehow? And I don't know if that means creating some sort of a, or I don't even know if we have the authority, but making some sort of subcommittee where we have people that are actually tasked on this commission with exploring what sort of, what we can do as a commission with respect to communicating these issues to the governing bodies in a, in a strategic way? And that committee can work on these things and then bring product or discussions they've had back to the whole, we can talk about those things and keep that ball rolling. Because, I mean, I've been really pleased with this conversation tonight, too. And, I mean, honestly, I thought it was just going to be about rural representation on this commission, and I'm so happy that it's not just been about that, even though that may be what we're really focusing on. And so I just, I feel like we need to keep that rolling somehow. And I, though I have faith and confidence in the chair, maybe a little less so in me, but still, since I'm vice chair, in, in being able to do that, I, I don't, you know, I, I think that we have other people on the commission that would be maybe even better suited and better voices to discuss those things. So I kind of raised that, I'm rambling about it, and I, maybe it's something I just need to ask direct towards Jeff, if that's something that we can, maybe, we don't even have to talk about it now, we can talk about it later, but maybe something to be considering at some point, a more strategic and ongoing discussion about the broader issue of diversity in the real sense and not just necessarily what we're, what we've been talking about tonight.
So just to clarify, David Carter, Chair, Commissioner Sinclair, you'd like to ask Jeff whether that's even like an option within the, you know, the, the administration of this commission, is that correct?
Yeah.
Jeff Crick, Playing and Development Services. Article three, section five of your bylaw states that other ad hoc committees may be appointed by the commission chair as necessary to study, facilitate, and/or make recommendations of specific items. Such appointments will include purpose, members, and presiding officers. Planning commissioners may, or excuse me, planning commission members shall be appointed by the chairperson to serve on the ad hoc committees. No ad hoc committee shall have more than four planning commissioners appointed to it. So you can have the option under the bylaws to go down that route. It just has some specific reasons and guidance that have to be applied to it, but it is a possibility under the bylaw.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. I see Commissioner Butler was raising her hand before, and I want to make sure we recognize, recognize her. Commissioner Butler?
I think what Commissioner Sinclair said is important. My, and that's why I think Commissioner Willie and I were talking about the use of the word diversity and what it meant in the letter. So my interpretation of, of the letter and what we were talking about was geographic and not really anything else. So I think that's important to specify, which is again, why I don't like that word in, in the letter, because I, I think we're just talking about location and residence. And that's my understanding, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Butler. David Carter, Chair. I'm glad you brought that up again, because I think, you know, getting back to my opening comments, it is the geographic diversity which I think makes assumptions about insights and perspectives that lead to a broader question of diversity and not just superficial, but in terms of, again, life experiences that can inform the business of this commission. So what I would like to request of the, and I don't know what, what our action needs to be, but what I'd like to request of the commission is that the vice chair and I meet again after the orientation on Friday, that we come up with some concrete recommendations, which may include a subcommittee or maybe a letter, a draft of a letter that we present back to the commission. And, and Jeff, I'm, you know, Jeff and Becky, I know the, you know, the, the agenda for next month is likely, you know, if not set in stone, at least set in clay, but I would like to have, I'd like to be able to set aside some time at the end of the next month's meeting to report back on the, the conversations that the vice chair and I have had, you know, to, to distill any insights from the orientation and to make some, some specific recommendations to the commission. And I'd just like to hear other commissioners' feedback on whether that is moving in the right, in the right direction. Commissioner Payton?
Commissioner Payton, I just wanted to comment, I've been pretty quiet until now, but I think the direction and, and I guess this here, here's kind of what I've been thinking. It does talk about diversity and it talks about, but we're talking about geographic locations. What I always think of is, I think Commissioner Willie sort of touched on this earlier, but I always think it's better for our commissions to reflect our population. And I feel like that's kind of, I don't want to say left out, but, but it's, it's like that seems like would be our ultimate goal is that our commissions, the makeup of our commissions reflect the makeup of our population more closely. And I'm not sure if maybe that's what we're thinking we're after, or we'd like to see. I mean, with all of those diversity factors, income and, and race and geographic location and, and employment and all of that. So I guess I would like to further continue thinking about those things.
Thank you, Commissioner Payton. David Carter, Chair. Any other points of view? And I think it would be helpful, I know we're kind of, this, we could keep talking about these, sharing, sharing our thoughts indefinitely. And I think it has been very helpful to speak openly about some issues that have been probably on many of our minds for, for some time. I think there's more to say, there's more to be considered. So I've put out a, what I think is a fairly concrete request, and I'd just like to hear feedback from other commissioners, whether that is going to move us in the right direction or whether you want something more concrete. Commissioner Struckoff, please.
Planning Commissioner Eric Struckoff. I like your idea. I think that even a short discussion on Friday with our planning, our elected officials about this topic would help focus this, this commission's work in that direction. And so I think it's a good idea to talk to them and then return to the work. So I think that you made a good suggestion.
Thank you, Commissioner Struckoff. Any other commissioners? And I would just like to get back to the question of, you know, I don't know if we have, if we have to make any motion at all, or if we just say, well, this was a good discussion and we can adjourn at some point, but, you know, like I say, I'm happy to keep discussing, but it would be helpful to know, this is one thing I would like to ask of commissioners. Do you want to see a concrete decision? Do we want to see a motion? Or, or, you know, when, when everybody feels like they've said their, their piece, do we basically pat ourselves on the head for a good beginning to a discussion? So Commissioner Sands, please.
I might have a recommendation, since we, we are so close to having our session on Friday, that we, we broach the topic then, if we have the opportunity to do so, and then use that to inform our next, our next set of decisions and, you know, whether that's a subcommittee, I'm sorry, not a subcommittee, ad hoc committee or, or whether or not we can arrive at a decision in a public forum later on, I think it's probably, I don't know if it's a motion to defer or we just, we just sit on it for maybe a month or so, readdress it.
Thank you, Commissioner Sands. David Carter, Chair. Other, other specific responses? Commissioner Ashworth.
Planning Commissioner Ashworth, just that I'd really like to hear the perspectives of the, the commissions we'll meet with on Friday. I think they may add some more depth to this discussion and, and I feel like what they can contribute will inform the next step as to where we go forward. I would like to hear what they have to say about this discussion, because I'm still, I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing, okay, let's think about a letter that references just geographic representation. And then I'm hearing about a greater discussion about representation on this committee, and I don't know which, really which way we're headed. So I would welcome a larger discussion, in my, my opinion. I would welcome the large, larger discussion about representation.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth. David Carter, Chair. Anyone else? And while people decide what they want to say next, I'll turn this back to Jeff and just ask, in order to kind of meet the needs of the agenda and the items that have been set out before us, is there any requirement for us to take any action whatsoever?
Jeff Crick, Playing and Development Services. On this particular item, no, it could just be a simple tabling of it. In the instance, though, given the resolution and the current format you're in, we'd recommend a roll call vote to table it if that is the purview of the board to allow more time for that, just so that it's on, it meets the resolution that we have in place for the meeting.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. With that, I'll return back to the commission for any other points of view, feedback, resolutions that anyone would like to make.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. I'll just, I'll agree, I guess, or assent with your thought, Chair, on just regrouping you and I after Friday, as long as the commission is okay with that, and then coming up with something to bring back, perhaps even at the next month, then we can table this discussion and we come up, I assume, at the next month's meeting and we can just carry on there. I think that's okay if people trust us with that. Yeah, I'm okay doing that. I, I'd like for there to be movement forward, but it's hard to do that at this point, at this hour of night. So I think that's a good way to go.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. Would, okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Carpenter.
Carpenter, Commissioner. Yeah, I'd be okay with tabling your for tonight as long as we have a review date, because I'm all too familiar with, from court cases, if, oh, we'll leave this open until something happens and then everybody forgets about it. But you have, you set a date that we're going to bring it up again, then we're going to have some movement. So if that's possible for next month, that would be optimal, especially if we have a chance to bring this up and a little bit on Friday and get, start some discussion there. I think that could lead to where our discussion goes next.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Sinclair.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. I think Commissioner Carpenter is right, and I would maybe add to that, that we do have an actual county appointment that'll be coming open soon, because we don't have Commissioner Struckoff with us for that much longer. And I don't know how those, where in the works that process would be on the county commission side in terms of going out and finding people and seeing who would be willing to fill that. But we do have, basically, we do have a, something to keep our feet to the fire. We need to, if we want to have an immediate impact, so to speak, we need to do something and get something communicated. And I guess in some respect, that's why Friday could be really beneficial, given the fact that we will have at some point a new county appointee. But if we could, if we could think of this as us being able to come back in a month and hopefully not come back with, you know, a motion for an extension, as Commissioner Carpenter is well aware, happens in a lot of cases, that'd be great, if we could make some meaningful progress. And I feel like we could make that commitment, the chair and I.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. And David Carter, Chair, I would actually say, I think we've made a great deal of progress by, by airing specific points of view, and I feel like I have a much clearer idea of possible next steps. And that's why I feel like Friday's discussion should give us some really useful information to make, you know, some concrete progress. So this, would anyone else like to raise any points of view? I don't know if we need to make a motion to, to table this until, until the next available meeting time. You know, I think if we phrase it that way in terms of if we can find time on the agenda next month, that would be preferable. But I'm certainly willing to, to move diligently in that direction.
I don't know what the, so maybe it's a point of order, Jeff. If, if I want to table this with the, with the expressed conditions, is this something that requires a motion or can I just propose that and put it up for a vote right away?
Jeff Crick, Playing and Development Services. You could just propose it and put it up for a vote. We can make sure to try to get that on the next available agendas and make sure to keep that on the schedule for everybody so it comes back.
Very good. Thanks. Pending any further comments from commissioners, I would propose that we table this item until the next available time slot on, on our next agenda.
Commissioner Struckoff.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, could I ask you to call the roll, please?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Playing and Development Services.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin? Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes 10 to zero.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank all the commissioners for their candid points of view. It's much appreciated. I think it's what we need in order to make whatever our next step is, you know, to maximize the integrity of that, of that step. So honestly, thanks so much. With that, I guess we need, I guess we need a motion to adjourn, correct?
Jeff Crick, Playing and Development Services, correct.
Okay, thanks. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Rob Sands, Playing.
Thank you, Commissioner Sands. And Commissioner Butler, would you like to second that?
Yes.
I think I saw your hand go up. Very good. So Jeff, could I ask you to call the roll, please?
Jeff Crick, Playing and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanklin?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes 10 to zero.
Thanks very much. We are adjourned. See you all on Friday. Have a good night. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.